Thank you. Please take note as to where the fire exits are. The entrance that you came in will be an exit for fire, as well as there is one directly under the clock, which is to your left at the end of the walkway. And there is a fire exit here. Please remember that it may not be close to your car. Food and drink are not permitted in the seating area of the auditorium. The special town meeting and the annual town meeting are being recorded. The chair asks that courtesy be shown to those speaking in voicing their views, especially if they don't agree with yours. For the benefit of all present, anyone wishing to address the chair is asked to use the microphones located in the aisles. I would leave. I can't see. Sherri, is there a microphone back there? Okay, the microphone is located only in the front of the aisle to my left. And also, you may use the big speaker stand in front, if you'd like. The special town meeting is now called to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who have worked in the town and have now passed. I quietly wish...
...to the life of the United States of America, in this republic full of its saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and keep in your thoughts William Ablin, police department dispatcher, Robert Ravello, planning board, William Talbot, planning board, Eleanor White, school nurse, Paul Parent, council on aging driver, Joe Bolton, finance director, town accountant, Jean Noack, teacher, James Dewar, police, Herbitt Menses, police, James McIntyre, police, Ruth Curt, council on aging, George Gesner, poll worker, Michael Rintowitz, zoning board and poll worker, Rochelle Damaris, school administration, Marion Bauer, council on aging, Jean Lyons, teacher, Ron Beechey, library custodian, Brian Biara, teacher, Norman Latenda, water department, Lucinda Camara, cafeteria, and home teacher, Madeline Vervaras, cafeteria. You may be seated. Special Town Meeting, Article One. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds or sum of money to accrued payroll expenses incurred during fiscal year 2021 or take any action relative there to, the advisory finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $4,196.65 for the purposes as written in the article. In that said, said sum, be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article One as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
This is a general housekeeping item. In fiscal year 2021, the school department had additional payroll accrued expenses and therefore were not included in the accrued payroll list.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Cluzi, unanimous vote affirmative. Article Two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds or sum of money for the purpose of paying a late bill for computer software for the historical commission's laptop incurred during fiscal year 2021 or take any action relative there to, the advisory finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $99.99 for the purposes written in the article, and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article Two as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This is a general housekeeping item. The invoice was received after the end of the year and vote was completed and therefore was not included in the comfort list.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Cluzi, unanimous vote affirmative. Article Three. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds or sum of money necessary to carry out changes for fiscal year 2022 in the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Somerset and the highway department, union local 1701 of the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, FLCIO, state council 93, or take any action relative there to, the advisory finance committee will have a recommendation at special town meeting. Mike?
Well, our recommendation, I believe, is that this is going to be indefinitely postponed because no action was taken, so we would recommend that this article be postponed.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote indefinitely postpone this article after turning over the warrant. Parties have not yet been agreed.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to indefinitely postpone Article Three as written. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Cluzi, unanimous vote affirmative. Article Four. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds or sum of money necessary to carry out changes for fiscal year 2022 in the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Somerset and the water department, union local 1701, state council 93, American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, FLCIO, or take any action relative there to, the advisory finance committee will have a recommendation at special town meeting. Mike?
Again, seeing that this article is to be indefinitely postponed, we recommend that it be postponed.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace?
I move that the town vote indefinitely postpone this article after turning over the warrant. Parties have not yet been agreed.
I don't know if that mic's on anymore. Did you hear?
No. Madam Moderator.
Oh, now that you're here, you go ahead.
I want to wake everybody up.
Yep.
Hi, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote indefinitely postpone this article since we have parties that have turned over the warrant. Parties have not come to agree.
There's a motion, second, on Article Four to indefinitely postpone. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Cluzi, unanimous vote affirmative. Article Five. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds or sum of money necessary to carry out changes for fiscal year 2022 in the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Somerset and the water pollution control union local 1701, state council 93, American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, FLCIO, or take any action relative there to, the advisory finance committee will have a recommendation at special town meeting.
Again, to indefinitely postpone.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote indefinitely postpone this article since we have come to agreement on the contract. Turning over.
You've heard a motion, second, to indefinitely postpone Article Five. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Cluzi, unanimous vote affirmative. Article Six. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds or sum of money for the purpose of relocating public safety radio antenna from building to freestanding structure, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative there to, the advisory finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. It was eight to zero.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ward.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $306,852 for the purposes written in this article, and some be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article Six as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ward.
This article, if approved, will fund the construction of a freestanding tower at the north end of the public safety lot and the relocation of the microwave dish on the public safety building to that freestanding tower. Public safety radio communication is seriously impacted due to the sitting of a high voltage electrical transmission tower at Potterville Substation that is directly in the line of sight to a transmitter receiver on the Fall River side of the top rivers. To alleviate the issue, a microwave antenna located on the public safety building must be relocated to avoid the interference caused by the installation of the tower. This will require construction of a radio tower at the north end of the town's property to avoid any further line of sight interference from the structure at the Potterville Substation. The town administrator is currently negotiating with National Grid to have the company absorb the costs associated with this project. However, a funding source must be identified should negotiations fail, as the town's public safety personnel are currently at risk due to degradation of radio communications in the north and south end of town.
Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article Six as written and recommended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Cluzi, unanimous vote affirmative. All articles of the special town meeting have been acted on. The chair will entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting.
No vote.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Cluzi, unanimous vote affirmative. We have a few minutes before the annual town meeting is going to start. The town administrator has a presentation and the budget. Are you ready to do that now? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Michael. Do you hear me?
Thank you. It should be on now.
On now? It's a little low. Can you hear me? Everybody hear me? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Michael Gallagher, your acting town administrator. I thank all those who've come out this evening for this important thing that we do every year. I want to thank you all for being here. I just, I won't take up a lot of these time. I just want to go through a few things for you, just very low level recommendations on where we're going here. So, this is a, the majority of the articles are going to address your fiscal year 2023 operating budget and a number of capital items that have been requested by various department heads. We went through a process with all the department heads, with all of their needs, and spent a lot of time doing this. So, some of the things we're going to talk about tonight, and I'm going to, again, put them very quickly, your revenue sources, which is your real estate taxes, your excise taxes. Your real estate taxes including residential, commercial, and personal property. Excise tax, I'm sorry, personal property is there as separate. State aid, unrestricted state aid, that comes directly to the cities and towns. And also Chapter 70, which is really geared more for education, but again, comes in as part of the cherry sheets from the state. You also get some of your revenue from permits and licenses and then other local receipts that are within the town. On the expense side, on the next slide, please, on the expense side, actually, no, I'm going to go through some of your budgets. Yeah, on the expense side, you have your fixed costs, which include things like health insurance, pension costs, the things that we really don't have a lot of control over, tuition out for diamond, tuition out for Bristol County Agricultural School, some of your insurance, your liability insurance, the town audit we have to do every year, unemployment insurance, those are the types of things that the department heads don't have a lot of control over, except for, obviously, the number of people that work here will determine your healthcare cost. But the department heads don't have any, any same idea of that, except for the higher ones. And then you have the departmental budgets, which is really what affects your service to the next slide. So, some of the goals and objectives that we looked at as we built your budget for this fiscal year is to be fiscally responsible. What we didn't want to do was spend more money, more of your money than we needed to. We wanted to maintain, and if we could, in certain places, enhance the delivery of services to the community, because that's what this is all about. It's delivering services back to you with your money. Maintaining positions, we tried to maintain all of the existing positions within the departments, and we didn't have any degradation in service delivery. And then we analyzed all the expenditures with all the departments. We sat down and we reviewed all the pieces that were within the departmental budgets. And we went through line by line in some cases to really get to the bottom line of what we were spending our money on. Next fiscal year, my recommendation to the town administrator, we need to actually take a look at this zero-based budget and actually go right there and read every line and analyze every line item in detail. And so we looked at, we looked at areas to implement efficiencies, and then we also, as I mentioned, we looked at capital things, you know, what are the things you need to actually operate your department? What do you need for vehicles? What do you need for equipment? Those types of things, so that we can make sure that we actually deliver what we need for the town. Next slide, please. Some of the significant budget drivers that we ran into as we were going through all of this was minimal increase in your local revenues. So, your local revenues are made up with, are made up from the baseline of the previous year. So, you have your baseline of what was actually used to determine what your tax rate is going to be. So, you take that baseline, you add to that baseline, usually stay at two and a half percent, plus any new growth. Most communities have hit that two and a half percent because the amount of taxation that they're doing has actually reached the capacity that the town has. In your case, as a town, you have a lot of headroom in your capacity, so you have about 18 million between what you're actually taxing and the capacity that the town has, which is your, your, let's say, it's a space where you can go if you need to actually raise taxes to complete your services. New growth, your new growth for next fiscal year was significantly less in our prediction than your current fiscal year. So, we mean fiscal year 22, the new growth was over a million dollars, and fiscal 23, we're looking at significantly less, probably about $350,000 to $400,000 in new growth for fiscal year 2023. And then we have some increases in state aid from the governor's budget. And by the way, just so you know, there are four processes within the budget from the state. You have the governor's budget, which is House One, that usually comes out and restarts this whole process. You have House Ways and Means Committee, Senate Ways and Means Committee, you have a version that comes out that's a joint discussion between both of those groups, and then you have the final budget that the governor signs. At present, we are at the Senate's needs, so we're only at the third step to five, to get final approval from the state. So, we stuck with the governor's budget, because that's usually pretty good. It's a pretty good indicator of, excuse me, where we are for revenues from the state. As far as your fixed costs, we have increases in our health insurance. Health insurance has gone up across the board for everybody. I'm sure you're all feeling that, from your employers, or if you're retired, from the increases in medical care costs, et cetera. We have an increase with contributory retirement, for the amount of money we give for pensions to the retirees. We had an increase in tuition out from diamond, it was a small increase, but it was an increase there. We got a reduction in our costs for the Somerset-Berkley Regional High School, which I thought was very, very interesting. We had another reduction. And then the state assessments, we had an increase in the state assessments. I talked a little bit about the cherry sheet. Cherry sheet has two sides to it. One of them is the revenue side. So, we had increases in revenue in Chapter 70, and some of the local aid comes directly to the town. But then on the flip side of that, they charged us back a lot more than they did the prior fiscal year. So, we had increases as well in those fixed costs that we adapted to. Next slide, please. Some of the other drivers, we had the increase in departmental budget requests, and those were mostly due to contractual increases that were voted on here at town meeting for the various departments. We had utility costs, we're seeing it at home. We have the same thing, we have a number of buildings in towns, we have increased utility costs that we're seeing for heat and lights. We also saw a significant increase in our cost of fuel for gasoline and diesel. And you can see that, that's actually the budget as a line item, not one of the lines within the budget itself. And then we looked at service delivery and the needs for service delivery. Next slide, please. So, here's an estimated revenue summary, so you have the tax levy, which is what will go to commercial, real estate, residential, and personal property. You have your state aid, 12 million and five, the local receipts of 4.3, and then other revenue sources are things like interest first from water and sewer. We do a lot of things with water and sewer, and what we do is we do a transfer of funds from the water and sewer enterprise fund back to the general fund, so you'll see those in there as well. And then free cash. I could not balance your budget by going above three and a half percent plus new growth on your taxes. Didn't make sense, so I included $500,000 in free cash this year. My recommendation to you going forward is that you stop using your free cash to balance your budget and do it strictly through your other revenue sources. This year, though, I felt that it was appropriate to recommend to you that we do it in this particular fashion. So, what you have in front of you this evening is what would be referred to as a balanced budget. So, your revenues and your expenses are identically. It took a lot of work from the department head, it took a lot of work from my office to get to that point, but we have a balanced budget. This is the way it should be done every year. The annual town meeting, the town administrator should be coming to you with that balanced budget. You shouldn't have to be looking to other sources of income later in the year to balance that budget. You have it, it is balanced this year, so when you vote for budget this evening, you will have a balanced budget. You won't have to do any further, any further funding of that budget for fiscal year 2023. Next slide, please. Just to give you an idea, just a pie chart, pretty quickly, on those same items we just talked about, you can see that the largest portion of the budget is taxation, local tax levy, the rest of it is state aid, and you can see all the pieces begin to collapse, if you will, and get past local receipts. By the way, the local receipts, the 4.3 million local receipts are things like excise tax for vehicles, it's those types of things that make up the local receipts. Next slide, please. So, here's an example of your operating budget, or a table for your operating budget for fiscal year 23 versus fiscal year 22. So, you see your departmental requests went up by about 4.12% to $34,794. Your fixed costs went up 4.62% to $13,385. Your regional schools went up slightly by $85,000, 0.73% debt service. You can read these, I don't need to read them to you, but that gives you an idea of where all the pieces came in. Your overlay and other went down by 25%. Reason for this is we did not budget this year an overlay for payments. Every year when you do your budget, you usually budget money for overlay for payments, and that overlay for payments is used to pay for companies, individuals that have requested their payments on their property tax. Most of that is commercial. Most of what you've done in the past has been commercial for your payments, but we actually are in the process, we won a court case, we've waited for them to release that money. So, in speaking with the town assessor, we felt that we were appropriate to not budget anything for the overlay, because you've got enough in the end of the account this year to cover anything that potentially come forward in the next year. So, we were confident we would have, the $750,000 that's there, was never really put forward to you in the budget presentation, that is the portion of the funds that we transfer from the general fund to fund trash removal. So, trash toll, trash removal is about 1.6 million. We're possible removing your trash, the bad program that we have, that's pay-as-you-throw. We get about $850,000 from that, so the other $750,000 has to come from the general fund, so we have to raise and appropriate that. But there isn't a line item in the budget, it's a separate article, and you'll see within the town meeting as we go through these articles, but that's what that $750,000 is for. Next slide, please. Next slide gives you an idea of, again, a pie chart of where your costs are. You see that education is your biggest expense, it's the biggest expense in any community. You see that the school department and regional schools make up over 50% of the cost of operating the town. That is not outside the mark. That is, that is pretty normal for everyone that you've ever worked in, or ever had to deal with. It all looks the same. Your other departments make up a much smaller fraction, they're less than a quarter, one a quarter of every dollar that goes to all of your other departments. And then you have other things like debt service, the cherry sheet assessments, those are all of their expenses, and you'll see all of those in the article session book. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the other thing we did was capital, capital improvements. So, we went through, we looked at, and one of the things that we need in order to do the job, I went back to the department, and I said, my first question was, where's your 10-year capital? And then they looked at me and said, you know how to do that. So, we did, we undertook the process, and I want to publicly thank the department heads for the job they did. They all dug right in, gave me a 10-year plan, mapped all of that out, and mapped it in a much larger fashion. I took what they gave me, I added it to a larger spreadsheet that showed every department and every need that every department had. And we went through a process where we looked at what those requirements would be, and we actually ran them in order of need, and we used things like public safety, safety of the employees, those types of things. That was our first category, which is kind of, we looked at everything we need. And what you'll see tonight, in addition to voting the budget, you will see a number of articles where we're transferring money from free cash to fund those. And one of the reasons I did that was free cash should be a source of funding for those types of things. Free cash should not be used for operating. Using free cash to operate your town is the equivalent of living on your bonus if you're in the private sector. You don't know if it's going to last, you don't know how many months you're going to get, you don't know what your bonus is going to look like. You should never use your free cash to balance your budget. It should be used for the capital requests that we need to run most departments. There's one-time expenses, using one-time. But those are your funding sources. We looked at debt, you don't have a lot of debt, and not borrowing anything this year to do any of that. We have retained earnings, retained earnings is in the water and sewer enterprise, so it's very similar to free cash, it's that retained earnings piece at the end of the year. It's the excess of revenue versus expenses. And then we have some artwork that we talked about. When you come in, you've got a huge spreadsheet that shows all of your balances, all of the funds that you have, and then what we're using each of those funds to do. And I marked all of those with the article that's associated with that particular article. So, you pull the article, large spreadsheet, and see where you're spending all of your money, and you know where you're at. Next slide, please. So, real quick, I want to close this and move on, so we can get to the meat of this. You have a balanced budget, I submitted to you tonight a balanced budget. I highly recommend you stay with that balanced budget, follow that process. Your revenues include your expenses, that's what a balanced budget is all about. You'll see uses of free cash for, as I said, in this particular case, I'm recommending a half a million dollars in free cash to balance your budget. In my recommendation going forward, this will be the last year of the year. Capital and other expenditures, you get a whole bunch of capital requests from the departments, you get some money from the public of that. On that spreadsheet, you see your opening balance, your expenses throughout all of the articles, and then your closing balance. You'll see a lot of items here that are geared toward attracting and retaining talented employees in town. That's one of the things we need to be very cognizant of. It's a market out there, where people are going to be the highest bidder, and we need to be careful of that. We don't want to be the highest bidder, but we want to just be in the ballgame. We don't want to be the highest bidder, or we want to just be in the ballgame and have discussions with them. And with that, there was some augmentation of your CPC this year. One of the things the Community Preservation Committee did was, in addition to using CPA funds, they're using some monies from free cash, blending those together. You'll see those in those articles as well, amounts of money that are coming out of the various departments to fund requests that came in from the town, the town department. With that, I again thank you. I will let you all get to your business. I'll be right back.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Annual town meeting begins now with Article one to choose all offices as requested by law to be chosen by ballot. This article has been taken care of at the election of April eleventh, twenty twenty two. Article two, to say that the town will vote the following consent calendar of routine annual town meeting articles. A, to hear a report, the town offices enact their own. B, to authorize the collector to use the same means which a treasurer may use when acting as collector. To hear. C, to hear an act on the report of any committee and choose any committee the town may think proper. D, to authorize the board of selectmen to accept and enter into contracts with the expenditure made funds allocated or to be allocated by the Commonwealth or the county for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement of town roads pursuant to the terms of said funding. Thank you for putting the lights on. The Advisory Finance Committee has no recommendation on this article. Article two, Mr. Smith.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town adopt Article two as written.
Thank you, is there a second? You've heard a motion and a second to accept Article two as written and recommended, is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, the chair will take the vote. This is an annual meeting article that is brought before the body at annual town meeting. All those in favor of Article two as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article three, to see if the town will vote to establish expenditure limits for revolving funds for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, as shown herein, or take any relative action thereto. I'm not going to read the eleven items, but I will give you a minute to look them over if you have not done so. The Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town vote to adopt Article three as written.
You've heard a motion and second to accept Article three as written. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This is an annual article authorizing spending limits for revolving funds that are used to support services and programs within several town departments.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article four, to see if the town will vote to establish the annual salaries of elected officials commencing July one, twenty twenty two, as follows, or take any action relative thereto. And again, I will give you a minute to look over the chart. The Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town vote to adopt Article four as written.
You've heard a motion and second to accept Article four as written and recommended, is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This is just an annual article that authorizes the opinion of southeast political positions.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be considered necessary to defray the town's expenses for the ensuing twelve month period, beginning July one, twenty twenty two, as follows, or take any action relative thereto. I'll give you two minutes to look this over. And these will be done separately, so five A is one article, five B is one article, and five C is one article. Five A, the Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-five million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said sum of twenty-five million, two hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight, be raised from taxation, and the sum of five hundred thousand be transferred from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-five million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, for the purpose of funding the general budget as written in the article, and that said sum of twenty-five million, two hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars be raised from taxation, and the sum of five hundred thousand dollars be transferred from free cash for said purposes.
Second. You've heard a motion and second to accept Article five A as written and recommended, is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This article provides for the annual appropriation of the general government with an increase of approximately three point nine percent from the prior year.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote on Article five A. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Appropriation for five B, which is the school department budget, proposed is twenty-two million, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-five, with an increase of nine hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred twenty-five. The Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-two million, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be raised by taxation.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-two million, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, for the purposes of funding the Somerset Public School Department budget as written in the article, and that said sum be raised from taxation.
You've heard a motion and second to accept Article five B as written and recommended, is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator. This article provides for the annual appropriation for Somerset School Department with an increase of approximately four point six percent from the previous year.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article three, five C, I'm sorry. The appropriations for the water and water pollution control enterprise operations. The Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of six million, six hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be raised from the water and sewer enterprise fund receipts.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Scott.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of six million, six hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars for fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty-two, to August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, for the purpose of funding the water and water and water pollution control enterprise operations, and the sum of six million, six hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars be raised from the water sewer enterprise fund receipts.
Sir, did you just extend fiscal year to August? It should be June thirtieth, not August.
Did I say August?
Yeah, you did. So you mean that to be June thirtieth? And there is a second on that. So you've heard a motion to accept Article five C as written and recommended, is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. O'Brien.
This article provides for an annual appropriation for the expenses to operate the water and water pollution control department for the purpose of the period of July one, two thousand twenty-two, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The amount requested of the operation of the water department has been decreased by sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars or point four nine percent for last year, and the amount requested to operate the water pollution control department has increased by sixty thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars or one point eighty percent for last year.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article six, to see if the town will vote to amend Table two compensation plan for general government positions set forth in the consolidated personnel bylaw adopted under Article three of the warrant of the annual town meeting of May nineteen, nineteen eighty-six, as last amended at the August third, twenty twenty, annual town meeting by adopting and substituting the following table effective July one, twenty twenty-two, or take any action relative thereto. Again, I will give you a few seconds to look over the compensation plan. The Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town so vote to amend Table two wage and salary groups of the consolidated personnel bylaw by adopting and substituting the provision set forth in Article seven effective July one, twenty twenty-two.
Now, hold on, Mr. Smith, you mean Article six, correct?
Six.
Right, six, okay. And there's a second on that, thank you. Any further, is there any discussion on Article six?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This article, if approved, establishes compensation for general government positions under the consolidated personnel bylaw with periodic comprehensive reviews and adjustments and compensation plan keeping salaries competitive in the employment market, maintain internal equality of salary ranges, and keeps pace with changes in cost of living. The general government bylaw employees and town clerk have not received a cost of living increase for at least three years, while unionized workers have consistently received cost of living adjustments. The existing salary table has proven difficult to attract and retain employees whose compensation is governed by the bylaw. The board of selectmen recognized this and voted unanimously to submit an article to amend the town bylaw to reflect a three percent increase across the board for all general government bylaw employees.
Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article six as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to amend Table two compensation plan for public utilities positions as set forth in the consolidated personnel bylaw adopted under Article three of the warrant of the annual town meeting of May nineteen, nineteen eighty-six, as last amended at the August third, twenty twenty, annual town meeting by adopting and substituting the following table effective July one, twenty twenty-two, or take any action relative thereto. Again, I will give you a few seconds to look this one over. The Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town so vote to amend Table two wage and salary groups of the consolidated personnel bylaw by adopting and substituting the provision set forth in Article seven effective July one, twenty twenty-two.
You've heard a motion and second to accept Article seven as written and recommended, is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This article, if approved, establishes compensation for public utilities positions under the consolidated personnel bylaw with periodic comprehensive reviews and adjustments. The compensation plan keeps salaries competitive in the employment market, maintain internal equality of salary ranges, and keeps pace with changes in cost of living. The public utility employees have not received a cost of living increase for at least three years, while unionized workers have consistently received cost of living adjustments. The existing salary table has proven difficult to attract and retain employees whose compensation is governed by bylaw. The board of selectmen recognized this and voted unanimously to submit an article to amend the town bylaw to reflect a three percent increase across the board for all public utility bylaw employees.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article seven as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end or transfer from available funds additional sum of money for the following town departments accounts or purposes. Again, a pie chart, I will give you a minute to look it over. The Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred two dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred two dollars for the purpose as written in the article, and that said sum be raised from free cash.
You've heard a motion and second to accept Article eight as written and recommended, is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This article, if approved, will provide additional funding for a three percent pay adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for all general government employees covered under the consolidated personnel bylaw. It will also provide additional funding for a three percent pay adjustment for fiscal twenty twenty-three of the town clerk. With the passage of Article six, the budget for fiscal twenty twenty-three, which support general government bylaw employees and the town clerk must be augmented to reflect the increase of bylaw employees.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate end or transfers from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of adjusting the compensation of consolidated personnel bylaw employees of public utilities in the water department for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, or take any action relative thereto. The Advisory Finance Committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of thirty-seven thousand for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be raised from retained earnings from the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum thirty-seven thousand dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings of the water and sewer enterprise fund.
You've heard a motion and second to accept Article nine as written and recommended, is there any discussion? Is there any? Is no discussion from Mr. O'Brien? Does anyone have any discussion? In the absence of discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, please, unanimous vote reaffirmative. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate end or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of adjusting the compensation from available funds of money for the purpose of adjusting the compensation of consolidated personnel bylaw employees for public utilities in the water pollution control department for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of sixteen thousand dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund. Mr. O'Brien. H nine.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of sixteen thousand dollars for the purpose as written in the article and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article ten as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This article, if approved, will provide additional funding of a three percent pay adjustment for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three for all water pollution control employees covered under the consolidated personnel bylaw. With the passage of Article seven, the water pollution control budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three must be augmented to reflect the increase of water pollution control bylaw employees.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article ten as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quincy Nambus will confirm it. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate end or transfer from available funds of money for the purpose of paying the town share of the operating and capital expenses of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District, said amount having been assessed to the treasurer of the town of Somerset would set assessment subject to the town's approval of the amended agreement or take any action relative thereto. Somerset, Somerset Berkeley Regional School District, the proposal was nine million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and four, which is a decrease of one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of nine million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and four dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised by taxation. Mr. Fensner Maker.
Madam Moderator. I ask the town vote to pay, to fund nine million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and four dollars for the town of Somerset's allocation of expenses associated education in Somerset Berkeley.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article eleven as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a second step to the overall budget proposed. Somerset Berkeley Regional School Budget is a total of, um... The overall budget is increasing by hundred, by five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and four dollars, two point nine five percent increase in the operating budget. Through a combination of the formula application, split between Berkeley and Somerset, along with increased State A, Chapter seventy funding, we have an increase of approximately five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and then we anticipate another fifty thousand dollars in school choice revenue. So, in short, this is some funding.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quincy Nambus will confirm it. Article twelve. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate end or transfer from available funds such sums of money for the purposes of paying the town share of operating expenses of the Greater Fall River Vocational Technical High School District as provided for by section six of chapter six ninety-seven of the Acts of nineteen sixty-two, said amount having been assessed to the treasurer of the town of Somerset or take any action relative thereto. Proposed is one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-three, which is in dollars, which is an increase of ninety-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine, I'm sorry, five hundred and forty-three dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised by taxation.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars for the purpose of paying the town's share of operating expenses of the Greater Fall River Vocational Technical High School District and that said sum be raised from taxation.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article twelve as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Van Vliet.
The reason for the increase is that we have an additional twelve students from Somerset currently enrolled that time of regional when compared to last year.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quincy Nambus will confirm it. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate end or transfer from available funds such sums of money for the purpose of paying the town share of the operating expenses of the Bristol County Agricultural School as provided for by section eighty-two of chapter six of the Acts of nineteen ninety-one, said amount having been assessed to the treasurer of the town of Somerset or take any action relative thereto. Proposed was going to be twenty-three, two hundred and eleven, two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is an increase of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and four dollars. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from taxation.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars for the purpose of funding the town's assessment for Bristol County Agricultural School and that said sum be raised from taxation.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article thirteen as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
This is the town of Somerset's share of the appropriation for twenty-three Somerset students attending Bristol County Agricultural School.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quincy Nambus will confirm it. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end or transfer from available funds of money for the expense of collecting and disposing of mixed solid waste, recyclable yard waste, and white goods in to determine whether pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E, the appropriation for said request will be offset in part or in the aggregate by the estimated receipts from fees charged for rubbish bags pursuant to Article ten of February eighth, nineteen ninety-three, special town meeting, as well as funds raised by taxation and transferred from available funds in the treasury or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, six hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars be raised from offset receipts and that the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars be raised from taxation.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, six hundred thousand for the purpose as written in the article and that sum of eight hundred and fifty thousand be raised from offset receipts pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, and that sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand be raised from taxation.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article fourteen as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
This article needs to be approved annually to fund the town's solid waste collection program in sale in nineteen ninety-three and apply the revenue collected through the sale of town trash bags towards the cost of the entire program. The town's pay as your throw program for solid waste, including bag sales, which does not completely cover the cost of trash.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quincy Nambus will confirm it. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate end or transfer from the PEG access and cable-related special revenue fund, sum money, of money to be expended during the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand twenty-three under the direction of the Board of Selectmen for necessary and expedient cable-related purposes consistent with the town license agreement. And further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into agreement for up to ten years or such lesser terms as the Board of Selectmen shall determine to be in the best interest of the town for the expenditure of such funds for the provision of PEG community access television services or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from the PEG access and cable-related fund the sum of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, said fund to be expended during fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand twenty-two, under direction of the Board of Selectmen for necessary and expedient cable-related purposes consistent with the town's license agreement and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into agreements of up to ten years or such lesser terms as the Board of Selectmen shall determine to be in the best interest of the town for the expenditure of such funds as written.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article fifteen as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
The town receives revenue generated by Comcast to be used only for cable-related purposes in accordance with the town's license agreement. PEG access cable-related fund is used to fund cable-related services and capital improvements needed to enhance PEG access television, PEG access services of public educational and governmental local cable television channels. The sum of three hundred and thirty-five thousand is the estimated revenue to be received during the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three in accordance with the license agreement.
Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quincy Nambus will confirm it. Article... I'm sorry.
Madam Moderator.
You have a motion. There is a motion on the floor, which is not to reconsider Articles one through fifteen as voted on by this body. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quincy Nambus will confirm it. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end or transfer from available funds of sum of money for the purpose of conducting a comprehensive pay and classification study for non-union staff, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The amount of this article is twenty-five thousand dollars. The advisory finance committee, by majority, did not recommend this at their meeting, but they, I believe, had a meeting before this and had changed their vote. Is that correct, Madam?
That is correct. Would you like me to go into some detail or?
You can do whatever you'd like to make...
All right, well, so quickly, we revisited this at a meeting prior to town meeting. We had further discussions with the town administrator, although we felt prior that this would be a decision best made by the incoming town administrator. Mr. Gallagher explained to us that he would need time to move this study along as well as, and if we didn't move it tonight, withhold it for next year. There are some deficiencies, he believes, in the compensation table that need to be addressed sooner than later. So then after we revisited, we made a second motion to approve the article, and that was passed unanimously.
Thank you. So the advisory finance committee on this article now is, recommends unanimously, recommends approval unanimously.
Yes. Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand for the purpose as written in the article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article sixteen as written and recommended. Mr. Wallace, do you have discussion?
This article would fund the cost of performing a pay and classification study for non-union staff, five to seven years. There is evidence that suggests that our current salary schedule may be out of date and is causing turnover. Pay and classification studies aim to establish salary schedules that enable the town to be competitive with other surrounding communities and to attract and retain personnel. They also were designed to ensure equity between employees. Reorganization, the issues with the current bylaw employee and other non-union compensation structure, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to submit an article to conduct a comprehensive compensation study for all non-union staff. The results of the study will consist of updated job description, a new salary table, and recommendations for placement of employees on the salary schedule.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Michelle.
Kim, you just get the other one.
Emmy?
Yep.
I don't know if this is a typo, but I've seen it in the article prior, a couple articles before. Do you raise money from free cash or do you use free cash?
We use money for free cash, so it's not raised.
It's not raised, thank you.
Correct. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I know it's Hi Kim, sorry.
Hi, Kim Micho.
Kim.
I can talk loud. Kim Micho, two twenty-two, Heidi Avenue, Somerset. How would the, who would be determining the criteria for which firm that would do the salary compensation study on?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
That usually, Kim would go out for, for a bit.
Okay, so you would get different minutes.
Even, even though, usually that's what we would do. It's similar that we just did something to get the north end of North Street, it went up for a bit, but it was only ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
First, I'm Ed Jones, Paris. I believe a few years ago, the prior town administrator did a study related to the pay, pay classification and change in descriptions. Did that, did that fall down? Did they ever complete that? Someone could answer that.
That was seven years ago. Seven years ago.
Okay. So, Chris, you know, that study was done seven years ago, and the challenges in this type of economy that we're currently in, you know, pay scales are going up substantially, you know, and, you know, what was appropriate seven years ago is not necessarily appropriate now. A perfect example is an M one level employee where, you know, they might be making eighteen dollars an hour at step one. That was probably a pretty good pay when minimum wage was, you know, ten, ten fifty an hour. Today, you know, by the time you get halfway through the next fiscal year, the minimum wage is going to be fifteen dollars an hour. An M one at eighteen dollars an hour is probably not a very good pay. So, you know, in order to, you know, retain the people that we have, and then in order to attract new people that are highly qualified to come work for the town, we need to, you know, get an updated study done. You know, we just went through this with the fire department. They're losing some of their people to other departments, and they just went out to hire paramedics. They made offers to two gentlemen that they felt were highly qualified, both trying to go to the town.
I know, I feel the classification study was a little more recent, so I don't know if you could provide that. I thought it was under the previous town administrator, maybe it is second.
I think it was twenty eighteen.
And then also, I believe, also, thank you, I believe all these positions are public. Solid information is readily available. I know when the school is negotiating with the teachers, they brought forward the pay comparables for the surrounding towns, and that's how we were able to make the decision. We didn't need a thirty thousand dollar consulting firm to come in and tell us what these people should be paid. So I think this information is public. I think we can call that data ourselves, possibly save twenty-five thousand dollars.
So there's a couple of...
So there's a couple of, couple of things with the existing study. The existing study has just five grades, M-one through M-five. That doesn't give us enough segregation to be able to appropriately line up, you know, where we need to bring people in at certain levels. That's one issue. Second issue is, we need updated job descriptions. Again, just at special town meeting, we had to change the description and change the responsibilities of a employee in the treasurer's collective's office, because nobody would accept the position for the salary that we were offering. So, again, we had to manipulate, you know, and come up with, you know, additional responsibilities for that position in order to bring somebody in. So, you know, we're seeing this through all areas right now. Again, you know, unemployment is, you know, so many people haven't come back to work. You know, flights are being canceled. You know, this is not a Somerset-related problem, but, you know, we need to have, you know, somebody come in, because these are for bylaw employees, you know, and, again, it's not like, you know, the superintendent of schools where, you know, you go around and you check nine towns. This is, you know, not every town is using an M-one through M-five structure. So you need somebody to be able to go out and do that work, to pull the information together, to update the job descriptions, and then, you know, be able to move forward. And it's being funded out of free cash, so we're not going to tax the residents from it. I understand free cash isn't free, but, you know, I think a twenty-five thousand dollar investment to be able to help retain the quality people that we have, and then to be able to attract quality people to provide services to our residents is a small amount of money today.
So, last, we just get confirmation of the amount that was spent on the last classification study, because I believe descriptions were updated in that study. When that was, and how much was spent on that, do we have that information available? Because I've been hearing seven years, or somewhat there, telling everybody their decision on, but I'm hearing three years for people that were, I believe, actually involved in the process, so. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, can I address that comment as well?
Oh, Mike, sorry.
And so, Chris, I kind of tend to agree with you that that study is much more recent than being said here. We brought that forward at one of the selectman meetings when we were discussing the department budgets. However, that being said, while reviewing the department budgets, there were people getting ten percent, seven percent raises in consecutive years, which is, in my opinion, is kind of outside of the normal government work, getting that kind of raise, back-to-back-to-back years, without getting any kind of promotion. So it seems that the study that was done is also somewhat flawed. So I think it would be in the best interest of the town as a whole to have a new study done that would increase more grades of pay and to basically determine whether that study was correct or not, because we've, we've all, on this committee, seen some pretty absorbent raises from certain people that certainly come off that schedule. But I do agree with you that it's much more recent than seven years. Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
So, again, I went through a couple of years ago, Chris, and put this grid, the M-one through M-five, step one to step twelve, into a spreadsheet, calculated the variance, calculated the percentage increases, and much like Mr. Passanac is saying, you know, for some of the steps in the middle of the table, there was, you know, fairly significant pay raises that then dropped off to like, you know, much lower pay raises. So you weren't increasing their pay in the early years, you were increasing in the middle of years, and then they were getting to the later years and only seeing minimal increases. So, you know, the study itself doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, or somebody as an employee, I'll stay until I get my big pay raises, and then I'm going to leave, because I'm only going to see my two percent increase a year after that. So getting the table set up in an appropriate manner that provides level compensation for employees without the spikes that they see in there right now is just one of the functions that I think needs to be addressed with a new and an updated study.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Boar.
The one thing I was saying to everyone in the room is opportunity cost, and that's the cost of not doing something. And I will tell you, when Ms. Duddy came up here and spoke, what she didn't say is that she left because she felt undervalued and underpaid. When she left, she left a myriad of information and experience with her. How many other people do we have lurking, waiting, feeling the exact same thing in town hall? We can't afford to assume that just because another town pays a certain position and writes the job a certain way, that we should do it exactly the same as well. Twenty-five thousand seems like a lot of money, and I understand that, but anything older than three years is not comparable to what's going on in today's market on any given year, never mind in the tumultuous world we're in right now with inflation trending over eight percent. So, with that being said, this is something we absolutely need to pass.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I happen to agree with Mr. Boar. Twenty-five thousand dollars is not a big cost for paying our employees. It costs much more to train a new employee, get somebody up to speed, so I have no issue with this. I think it should pass.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? The absence of further discussion, the Chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The Chair declares a unanimous vote, we terminate. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate under transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of updating and redesigning the town's website, including any incidental costs or expertise, or take any action relative thereto. Oh, I'm sorry. Any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. Cost of this article is listed as twenty thousand dollars. The advisory and finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said, some be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose as written in the article, and that said, some be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Oh, did we get a second on that?
Second.
You've heard a motion, second to Article seventeen, as written and recommended. Any discussion?
This article, if approved, will provide funding update and redesign the town website. Town website is in need of updating to provide more useful and better user experience. The provider will update the site to the latest version and assist with the redesign that is customized to the town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? The absence of further discussion, the Chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article seventeen, as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair declares unanimous vote, we terminate. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate under transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of implementing online permitting, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. Cost of this article is listed as sixty thousand dollars. The advisory and finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said, some be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars for the purpose as written in the article, and that said, some be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article eighteen, as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Boar.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to implement online permitting. Currently, all permit, permanent like departments must be conducted in person. Comprehensive permitting system is needed. System will provide user support to electronically apply for any permits, allow the applicant to track the progress of the permits requested, and provide means for departments to electronically sign off on all permits. Adding a tool allows electronic access to the permitting process will make the process more effective and efficient for the applicant and town staff.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? The absence of further discussion, the Chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair declares unanimous vote, we terminate. Article nineteen, if the town will vote to raise appropriate under transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of replacing twenty-five desktop computers and printers, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. Cost of this article is listed as twenty-five thousand dollars. The advisory and finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said, some be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty, the sum of twenty-five thousand for the purpose as written in this article, and that said, some be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article nineteen, as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to replace desktop, computers, printers, and network equipment. The town's desktop, laptop, computers, servers, network equipment, and printers are approaching or have reached their end of life. The desktops and laptops cannot be upgraded to the latest version of Windows, which has the potential to place the town's data at risk. The town endeavors to maintain appropriate processes to protect its data, but also needs to stay in step with recent updates and releases all operating systems of software and security patches. This article will begin the process of replacing desktops in the various town departments, providing a path to ensure the town stays current with software offerings.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? The absence of further discussion, the Chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair declares unanimous vote, we terminate. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate under transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of implementing online citizen engagement portal, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The cost of this article is listed as forty thousand dollars. The advisory and finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said, some be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars for the purpose as written in the article, and that said, some be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article twenty, as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to implement an online citizen portal. After upgrading the town website, the next step in providing a more robust user experience will be to implement an online citizens portal. Town's website provider offers an online portal that provides citizens a means to report issues and track the progress of their requests. The citizens engaged portal will provide the residents an alternative means to interact with various town departments.
Is there any further discussion? The absence of further discussion, the Chair will take a vote on Article twenty. All those in favor of Article twenty, as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair declares unanimous vote, we terminate. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate under transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of replacing the playground at waterfront park located at three fifty-four Main Street in San Francisco, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The cost of this article is listed as one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The advisory and finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of this article, and that said, some be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand for the purpose as written in the article, and that said, some be transferred from free cash.
Second. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article twenty-one, as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to replace the playground at waterfront park. This playground needs to be replaced. Report provided to the town in two thousand and eighteen determined the structure to be potentially hazardous, and that it should be removed. Replacement would require compliance with the American, Americans with Disability Act, ADA, and Massachusetts Architectural Assessment Board. Playground may be replaced in its existing location or in a location nearby as determined by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Moderator. Just a general question. I see a lot about free cash. What do we have in free cash since we're spending five hundred and fifty grand? Just a general question.
Mr. Gallagher, do you want to answer that?
Well, we have, we have about five million, and we have close to eight million total.
I'm just curious, see that, listing that cash.
If we move the three.
Thank you. You're welcome, Mr. Perez.
Yes. So this can be changed to location? So this is not just for the location down at the waterfront park?
This is.
So we're moving funding for a park, but it could be anywhere else?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith, do you want to answer that?
Yes. We had a discussion at the selectmen's meeting about the potential location for the new playground. The playground equipment, Village School was removed, and it no longer exists. The equipment at waterfront park has been deemed to be in need of replacement due to liability issues. So, there's some debate among the board members as to which of those two locations it should be placed, you know, but it would be in that particular area of the town. You know, we have a lot of smaller lots in that area, number of multifamily homes in that area, so, you know, to have one playground already eliminated, to have a second playground needing to be eliminated, you know, we need to, you know, put a recent playground equipment there, kids in that neighborhood.
This, Jessica, as I'm reading it, says replace playground equipment at waterfront park, so that would be the location.
Or it can be changed by the Board of Selectmen. Thanks, Chris. So, the only thing I'm thinking is, I saw a lot of comments online, a lot of passionate responses to the park at the waterfront no longer being there. So this would mean that if we chose to move it to the other location, there would be no playground equipment at the waterfront park. Is that correct?
If determined by the selectmen according to this article.
I don't know how to do this, but I'd like to make a motion to suspend this motion until the Board of Selectmen make a decision on where the funds would be spent, so that the voters can decide where the park will be.
So you're requesting that this motion, that this be, this article be indefinitely postponed until the selectmen make a motion, or decide where they want to go, and that is seconded by somebody?
Madam Moderator.
On the motion to indefinitely postpone. No, if that's what you'd like to say, too.
Yes, it's on the motion.
Yes.
I actually very much agree with Ms. Machado, because there's a few things at play here, and it's not just the waterfront. We have time to look at this. I'm not saying we shouldn't clear the playground. We absolutely should, it's the right thing to do, but let's let the police department spend a few months studying and telling us what they believe the safer areas. Beyond that, the Board of Selectmen actually have purview over waterfront park, not playgrounds and wrecked. So, that's another thing that should really be clear lines drawn and delineated before we move forward. I do believe that we should go ahead and have a playground eventually, but let's do our homework.
Any further discussion on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Victor? Jessica, can you just move to the side? Thank you.
Victor Machado, one nineteen Desmond Ave. I agree with Mr. Boar. I really, you know, I do respect the Board of Selectmen, but that would be like the Board of Selectmen asking where we're going to put a playground in our school property. That should be falling in the jurisdiction, in my opinion, of the border, of the border of Park and Wrecks. I think they should have a say in this, just strictly falling under your, and I understand that's town property, but I would want to have their input, because I'm sure in there, you know, I hear all the time that, you know, folks are looking for a pickleball court. I'm sure no one probably came up to your Board of Selectmen meeting and asked them for a pickleball court that they do with the border of Park and Wrecks, so I would recommend having a table as well, is that one reason.
Madam Moderator.
So, this is on the motion to indefinitely postpone only. Mr. Wallace.
Just on that, Victor, waterfront park, that's where the wreck department wants it in discussion, okay? That's number one. The other, it wasn't going to be moved from there, you know, five blocks away. It would be either Billy It would be either Village or Waterfront Park. I think it could be, I'm not speaking for the other two, but I think there's consensus that it should probably stay at Waterfront Park, but we get a camera on there and we light the area because it's hard to see when they're walking up by. So that's where we need to leave that for, we need a playground for the kids there. It's not going to go up to the school over here, okay? That's where it would go if we put a few protocols in, just make it safer for the kids down there. That's all.
Again, we're on the motion to indefinitely postpone. Mr. Souza.
I would disagree with postponing this. I would like to see it amended that it is only for Waterfront Park. I believe the chief has already weighed in and said that.
Indefinite postponement is on the floor first. So in order to do your amendment, maybe have to defeat indefinite postponement and then you can take your amendment off.
Okay. I just think that the body should know that we can amend this so it is definitely Waterfront Park. That's what I would recommend. Madam Moderator.
So the board is aware, just so the body is aware, we are still on the motion to indefinitely postpone.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I would ask that Mrs. Machado would throw a motion and I would make a motion that the.
No. We've got a motion on the floor, so I'm not going to accept another motion and it's not going to be withdrawn, it's going to be voted on. So if you can.
So, oh, I have the floor. So just so everyone's aware, I did discuss this with Barry Fontaine. They've had plans for a few years now to replace that equipment at Waterfront Park. They actually went out to bid. They have a pirate ship playground design for that area that would be fitting for Waterfront Park based on the shipping history that we have in the town. I then also followed up with Chief Costa to ask him for his recommendation as to what the better location would be.
Again, so we're on the motion to indefinitely postpone. So if you are making comments to vote against indefinite postponement, then I need to hear that.
That's what my comments are about, Madam Moderator.
Okay.
So the chief said that, you know, the best opportunity to limit crime in an area is to have a lot of activity and having the playground equipment there would be preferable to not having any equipment in the area. In addition, you know, if we postpone this article, you know, we're putting this off for a good seven months or longer and, you know, we're going to have, you know, that whole area without playground equipment.
Mr. Monis.
Madam Moderator, Steve Wallace, 618, wrote, "I make a motion to move the amendment."
To move the question?
The question.
And there is a second. So we're on moving the question for indefinite postponement. The first vote is for indefinite postponement. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Yep, very well. So I'm just going to do a quick standing vote. We're not going to count, we're just going to do a quick standing vote because this is only a majority. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please stand. Thank you. May be seated. All those not in favor of indefinite postponement, please stand. The chair sees a majority not in favor of indefinite postponement. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Moderator.
Yes.
Edward Souza, 133 Casser Street. I'd like to amend this motion. I'd like it to say the equipment will be at the Waterfront Park. It won't be a decision of the board of selectmen. That's my argument.
You've heard a motion, second, to amend the motion, the motion as said that this will only be at Waterfront Park and no other location be considered. Is that correct?
Correct.
And what seconded? Thank you. Mr. Machado.
Madam Moderator, can I just ask Mr. Fontaine to address the body to say that that is the place where he and the board of Park and Rec would recommend?
Mr. Fontaine is here and I will allow that. Barry, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. One of the things that we talked about, this was, talked about in 2018, when this came up before town meeting in 2018, this was a situation where both playgrounds at Village School and Waterfront Park were expected, as a number of our parks were expected to meet code was based on 2016. Our board has taken the active interest in going through all the playgrounds in the town. Some of them are not on the playground recreation board pervert, but we did have the board of selectmen at the time ask us if we would help them with this process. So at that time, we decided to help them. I wrote the whole thing for the 2018 Waterfront Park. We were eliminating both playgrounds that were in dire need of replacement and then what we did was we found a pedestal location, which was at Waterfront Park, that took into consideration of the shade, parking, and visibility. And at the time, you know, working with the police chief at the time, he thought that was a good location. At the time, we talked with our board members, that was a good location. So that's what we did. We decided to forego the playground at Village School and make one. Instead of having two 465 feet apart, we decided we would have one where it was best suited. So at the time, our board, okay, the playground recreation board at the time said that they would help assist the board of selectmen in that process. Unfortunately, it was defeated. At that time, the very next day, we decided to take our playground equipment out of Village School because it was unsafe, integrated, outdated. Fast forward now, we wanted to do the same thing with Waterfront, but it's taken a while to get back up to the front again. So our board has talked about it, but it doesn't fall under the playground recreation board, falls under the board of selectmen. Our board has talked. We've had meetings with the time chairman Wallace. We talked about our plan for our playgrounds and our parks. There are two playgrounds in town that have, two parks that have playgrounds. One was Waterfront Park and one was Buffington. Those are the only ones that our board really wants to help out with because they have playground equipment there to address the needs that are in place with the ADA compliance. So our board will be meeting Wednesday night, this will probably come up again, but I know we are in favor, our board's in favor of keeping it at Waterfront Park. But again, they have no jurisdiction over that. The board of selectmen, if they want us to help out with that process, I'm more than willing to help out with that. But I do agree with Chief Costa, that is a good location, okay? And they have stepped up, the police have stepped up efforts down there. So that's a perfect location. Village School is not a good location. It doesn't have the shade, it doesn't have the parking, it just, it would cost way too much more money to do than it would at Waterfront Park. The cost isn't significant because four years ago, the price was about $90,000. Now with the ADA compliance and also the architectural board with the playground servicing, as we know, everything goes up, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
So the amendment on the floor would take Article 21 and just make the location Waterfront Park and not give any jurisdiction to the board of selectmen to change that location.
I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
There's a motion on the floor to move the question. All those in favor of moving?
I approve.
Well, you're moving the amendment, I'm assuming. We're not on the question yet. So there is a motion on the floor to move the question, which is the amendment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are now on the amendment. So this is the vote for the amendment. All those in favor of amending Article 21 to just include Waterfront Park with no authority to change that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair agrees unanimously and voting affirmatively. Now, don't get confused because now we need to vote Article 21 as amended. So we're still on Article 21. All those in favor of Article 21 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair agrees unanimously and voting affirmatively. Article 21, I'm sorry, Article 22. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of completing renovations at the fire station two located on Brayton Point Road in Somerset, Mass., including any incidental costs or expenses, would take any action relative to it. Cost of this article is listed as $70,000. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $70,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $70,000 for the purpose as written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article 22 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
Purpose of this article is to seek funding for repair, renovation, and maintenance of the fire station two. Repair of the station would provide additional space for the storage of fire department equipment, apparatus, and would allow for possibility of staffing the location with our current complement firefighter paramedics. Open station two on a provisional basis will decrease response time to the south end of town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 22 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair agrees unanimously and voting affirmatively. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing a utility vehicle for the fire department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative to it. The purchase of the utility vehicle for the fire department is listed as $70,000. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $70,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $70,000 for the purpose as written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article 23 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
The fire department is seeking funding for the purchase of a new utility vehicle and associated equipment. Purchase would be made to replace the 2001 Ford F-350. Primary function of this new utility vehicle will include the towing of the technical rescue trailer, spill trailer, marine two trailer response to all bushfires and primary plow vehicle for emergency responses, along with rescue one, two, and rescue three during snowstorms.
Is there any further discussion on Article 23? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair agrees unanimously and voting affirmatively. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of replacing the boiler at the highway facility located at 1263 Brayton Point Road in Somerset, Mass., including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative to it. Cost of this article is listed as $180,000. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $180,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $180,000 for the purpose as written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Oh, that's a motion. Thank you. Motion has been seconded by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
This article of approval will provide funding to replace the boiler at the highway facility. The existing boiler was installed in 1980. We are currently spending thousands of dollars per year to maintain the boiler. A new boiler will operate at a higher efficiency rate, reducing energy consumption.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
Boiler there now is about 70% efficient. We had efficiency test on new boilers, that would be 96%. So it'll save us a lot of money on gas down the road.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 24 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair agrees unanimously and voting affirmatively. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing the two trucks for the Somerset Highway Department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative to it. Purchasing of the two trucks is listed as $165,000. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $165,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $165,000 for the purpose as written in the article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article 25 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
This article of approval will fund the replacement of two vehicles, system truck six and truck eight for highway department. Existing vehicles are both Chevy 5500. Truck six is a 2008 with 76,956 miles and truck eight is a 2006 with 72,945 miles. Chevrolet discontinued manufacturing the 5500 after 2008 and in turn discontinued the manufacturer parts for the vehicle. It is difficult, if not impossible, to obtain replacement parts. For example, in one instance, it took eight months to source a hydraulic pump for one of the vehicles. During that time, the vehicle was unable to perform the service of which it is designed. The vehicle should be replaced with a more modern version that has parts readily available.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair agrees unanimously and voting affirmatively. Article 26, to see if the town.
Mrs. Moderator, can I make a motion if we, I'm sorry, Mrs. Moderator, can we make a motion, Articles 15 through 25, to not be reconsidered?
Second.
Here's a motion, a second on the floor, that Articles 16 through 25 not be reconsidered. All those in favor of not reconsidering Articles 16 through 25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair agrees unanimously and voting affirmatively. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of replacing the HVAC roof at the Somerset Public Library, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative to it. The cost of this is $300,000, unlisted as $300,000. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose as written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article 26 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
This article of approval will provide funding to replace HVAC roof at Somerset Public Library. The six rooftop units need to be replaced. They were installed in 2001 with an intended 15 to 20-year lifespan. One unit is already under commission. The town is currently spending thousands of dollars per year to try to maintain these units. Replacement should significantly reduce these yearly costs in two ways. Number one, elimination of repair cost during the warranty period. The new units operate at two, the new units operate at higher efficiency, reducing energy consumption, thus compounding the winterization efforts. The roof has multiple leaks and it's difficult to tell where the leaks originated in order to replace them. This has been an ongoing problem for some time. Ceiling tiles also need to be replaced often. The roof was installed in 2001.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 26?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
The way it's written, it sounds like $300,000 is going to replace the roof and the ACs. It is upon further discussion that the roof will not be replaced. That would cost close to $600,000. So rather than try to pass just the appropriation measure, that was a half measure, we spoke with the director of the library and the roof is actually supposed to last 50 years and they do believe that just with repairs. So it does say that it's going to be replaced. The roof will not be replaced.
So are you amending this article just to say HVAC?
No, it's worked done. No, because the work still will be done on the roof and it just will not be replaced.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by having Article 26 as written and recommended. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinze unanimous vote and we affirm it. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to some of money for the purpose of visualization improvements at the Somerset Public Library, located at 1464 County Street in Somerset, Mass, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative there too. Cost listed for this is $30,000. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash. Mr. Wallace.
Madam Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purposes written in the article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article 27 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Wallace.
This article approved will provide funding for winterization improvements at Somerset Public Library. Building needs to be properly winterized. Building is very cold and uncomfortable for patrons during the winter months despite the heat being on. This project will considerably reduce energy costs and are expected to generate savings of $1,463... I wish it was $1,463.
No, not $1,463.
I got it. $1,463 per year.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinze unanimous vote and we affirm it. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to some of money for the purpose of installing LED lighting at the Somerset Public Library, located at 1464 County Street in Somerset, Mass, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative there too. Cost of this article is $45,000. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $45,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $45,000 for the purposes written in this article and that said be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article 28 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to install LED lighting at the Somerset Public Library. The interior lighting should be replaced with LED lighting to help ensure a more cost-effective and energy-efficient solution, including the reduction of costs associated with the replacement of bulbs and electricians.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 28 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinze unanimous vote and we affirm it. Article 29. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to some of money for the purpose of replacing the rugs at the Somerset Public Library, located at 1464 County Street in Somerset, Mass, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative there too. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $100,000 for the purposes written in this article and that sum be transferred from free cash.
Thank you.
Second.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article 29 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to replace the rugs at the Somerset Public Library. The current carpet is 20 years old. Many areas are frayed and some stains cannot be removed, even with a special carpet cleaner. And it is also important to know that the $100,000 is also for the cost of moving the shelves and all the equipment inside. It's not just simply the square footage.
Thank you.
Ms. Boshadow. Madam Moderator, I... Mr. Vaughn actually just spoke to that. I looked ahead to the article in regards to the police department that was looking for flooring. Their whole first floor of the police station was only going to cost $34,000. This project is at $100,000. It's carpet. Carpetting seems like it would cost less than tile or whatever is being used. I didn't know if anybody had more specific details on the cost for this or like the comparison of square footage between the library and the police department. It's just three times as much for what I thought was like a lesser costing product. So give a little bit about that.
A little bit more too is when we get to the police article. There's this tile and less square footage per se and then an older part of the building and they're replacing the tile with no obstructions. But I don't know if the library director wants to speak to that or...
So part of this, Jessica, as Mr. Vaughn said, is removing out the books and the shelving, which I think is probably costing more. I don't like moving my library around.
I received a quote. That was a quote from... I put this out just to get an estimate from a topic police, a topic plus. And I got a quote to do just the walkway for $17,835. And then we got a second quote to do the rest of the library for $82,42. And then there was some initial money put in there for moving the equipment. I guess usually in the past, we'd put the highway department.
Thank you. Mr. Sussa.
Hi. Just a quick question. Is moving the apartment part of the quote?
Not, not part of the topic quote.
Not part of the quotes back.
We don't know how to just...
Library and...
...costing the apartment. Is this going to... A bit trauma?
Thank you.
We did add some additional funds to that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion on Article 29 as written and recommended, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Chair Quinze unanimous vote and we affirm it. Article 30. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to some of money for the purpose of purchasing three police cruisers at the Somerset Police Department, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative there too. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to raise appropriate the sum of $165,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $165,000 for the purposes written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article 30 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to replace two 2011 Crown Victoria cruisers with 101,126 miles and 74,937 miles and replace one SUV, which will be handed off to the building department for travel to field inspection sites.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinze unanimous vote and we affirm it. Article 31. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to some of money for the purpose of installing security fencing at the Somerset Police Station, located at 465 County Street in Somerset, Mass, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative there too. Cost of this article is listed as $137,000. The advisory finance committee will have a recommendation at town meeting.
Which article?
Article 30. No, I'm sorry.
31.
No, Article 31, sorry.
Yes, we have voted prior to recommend this article. Thank you, Sarah.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith. Is that Mr. Smith or Mr. Vaughn?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn, thank you.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $137,000 for the purpose of, as written in this article, and that sum be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article 31 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to install security fencing and a rolling gate at one walk-through gate to enclose the rear of the police station parking lot to provide security for employees and equipment.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Michelle.
Madam Moderator, I was just wondering, has there been any incidents why we're about to spend $137,000 on a fence? I'm just thinking, it seems a little high, but I was just wondering if there's been any incidents.
Madam Moderator, I will tell you that there has been one exact incident and others where police are coming off after duty, having dealt with people, and there are citizens in the parking lot waiting to address them and they have no security barrier whatsoever. Furthermore, the cost of this, the idea of electronic gate that opens and closes is a significant cost and originally we wanted to also pave the parking lot with valid wage with the cost of everything else prevented this and this was, we had to go with just defense itself. I do believe it is necessary.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Chris.
What is that cost of paving that parking lot? Do you have that? Just...
Chief has. Have you?
It would have been close to about $99,000 dollars to pave and extend the parking lot. So the plan is just to extend out the fence and revisit the pavement in the future.
I mean, would the fence have to be taken apart or moved to pave? I would think to just pave the parking lot. We're going through, we're spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I would think to just pave the parking lot for another $100,000. That's done and fence is done. If you'd like to make a motion, I'd...
Okay, Chris, before you make that motion, you know that I am not in favor of...
I thought that was under your threshold.
Under my threshold? No, not under my threshold. That's more than half of that, so...
So is that enough?
That's enough. Because what Chris is asking for is to put another $100,000 into this article for the pavement. What I'm saying is that when we send out the warrant, Todd, we send it out so that everyone understands. So there's a protection that has to be done for the people who are not at this meeting. So they may agree to the $137,000 for the fence, but not agree to raising this $99,000. So in fairness to everybody who is a taxpayer, I have never allowed anything to go up that high because that's more than half of this.
I certainly respect the taxpayers. My one question to you would be, is that legal with your authority to deny?
It's within my authority not to take a motion or not to go exceed.
Thank you.
Your vote. See, I do have some of ours. Mr. Sussa.
I'd like to move the motion.
You'd like to move the question?
Exactly, I'm sorry.
You've had a motion and a second to move the question. We are on Article 31 to install security fencing. All those in favor of Article 31 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinze unanimous vote and we affirm it. Article 32. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to some of money for the purpose of replacing all flooring on the first floor of the Somerset Police Station, located at 465 County Street in Somerset, Mass, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative there too. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $34,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $34,000 for the purposes written in this article and that sum be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article 32. And is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to replace all flooring on the first floor of the police station. The floors on the first floor are chipping and lifting in some places and causing a trip hazard. Most of the flooring is 20 years old and beyond useful life.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinze unanimous vote and we affirm it. Article 33. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to some of money for the purpose of replacing 50 pistols at the Somerset Police Department, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative there too. The advisory finance committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $21,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $21,000 for the purposes written in this article and that sum be transferred from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, second to accept Article 33 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
The current service pistols used by all full-time personnel are approaching 10 years of age and have fired thousands of rounds during this time. As such, they have reached their manufacturer's recommended service replacement threshold.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinze unanimous vote for Article 33. Article 34. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate indoor transfer from available funds to some of money for the purpose of purchasing three mobile speed signs for the Somerset Police Department, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative there too. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $11,000 for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $11,000 for the purposes written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion, second to accept Article 34 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article, if approved, will provide funding to purchase three mobile speed signs. These signs are meant to slow traffic down and encourage compliance with posted speed limits. These mobile speed signs can be used anywhere in the town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 34 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinze unanimous vote and we affirm it. Article 35.[1640.62] Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end or transfer from available funds the sum of money for the purpose of installing gutters and downspouts at the Somerset Council on Aging Complex located at one hundred and fifteen Wood Street in Somerset, Mass., including any incidental costs and expenses and take any action relative or take any action relative via two. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand for the purpose as written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
Second. You've heard a motion and a second to accept Article thirty-five is written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article if approved will provide funding to install gutters and downspouts at the, at the Council on Aging Complex. Currently, there are no gutters or downspouts on the Council on Aging Complex. This is essential to direct it away from the, to direct water away from the building and prevent water from getting inside the building and thus causing problems like dampness in the walls and roof.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I believe later on, um, there's another warrant to appropriate money to, uh, replace and repaint, uh, surfaces. Are we kind of putting the cart before the horse here? Uh, and if this gets approved, are we going to be installing new gutters over old paint? And then we have to take the gutters down again to replace and repaint.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
Again, the work is considered to be hand in hand with each other. The painting would be done first and the gutters would be...
That's my point.
Yeah.
If it doesn't pass, if the painting doesn't pass, we just want gutters for nothing. That's my point.
Again, I mean, gut, gutters wouldn't be for nothing. We have dampness currently getting into the building. We're creating a problem inside the building because of moisture, potentially mold problems. We could sell part of that building to the old red schoolhouse, so we're creating a liability for the town not having gutters on it. For some reason, the voters decide not to paint, I would propose still moving ahead and putting the gutters to alleviate the dampness problem inside the building. It could be a liability for the other taxpayers.
So, Mr. Cogdon, you're referring to the CPA article on the...
I am. I am. To me, it doesn't make sense to buy gutters and install gutters and then potentially have to take them down, risk damaging them. I mean, we all know how contractors are. I don't want to offend anybody here, but they're not the most delicate people. I can tell you that. So they're gonna take down these gutters and downspouts to, to paint if it doesn't pass. Can we move the other article forward, before this one? Approve the paint and then...
Not at, not at this point because we've already called this article to the floor.
Okay. I just want to make it, you know, body aware that the potential could be...
I understand. I can feel what you're saying and I'm sure everyone else understands what you're saying.
I certainly wouldn't do that on my own house. I would install gutters, take them down. A few months later, to, to repaint it, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, he's making an excellent point. Um, should the selectmen, could you amend this, uh, that the gutters don't go on until after painting is done? Contingent on painting of the building? Because if we don't paint the building, if we're trying to...
We're trying to...
Stay there.
All right, here we go.
I'd like to amend this motion, um, to be contingent upon, uh, painting of the building first.
So you, the motion on the floor is that the building we paint is first even though that article was not up yet? With a successful vote on to the CPA article, is that what we're saying?
To be clear, they're both probably going to pass this. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm discussing this, but the building has to be painted first before we put the gutters on.
I get it.
Everybody understands it, right? So if we pass both of these articles, we don't want somebody running out with the gutters on the building and then painting. So this is going to come after we paint the building.
So your motion is, let me see if I have it right, Mr. Sussa. Your motion is that the gutters, the work of the gutters or the job of the gutters be contingent upon the painting of the, of the building. So what happens if the, if that doesn't pass? We're assuming it's passing.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's contingent?
Work and job, painting, those things.
Okay. All right. Does everyone understand that motion?
Yes.
Yes. We're on the motions. The motion is, let me see if I'm stating this right, Mr. Sussa, because this is what we're going to discuss right now. You're making an amendment to the motion and that is that the gutters be placed after, after the CPA article is passed. So it would not happen until it is painted. Mr. Gallagher, you're not a resident, but I'm going to allow you to speak as town administrator.
Madam Moderator, Mike Gallagher is the acting town administrator.
I, I believe that motion did have a second.
I'll second.
It has to second now, Mr. Machado, but I believe somebody did second it very quietly. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mike Gallagher is the acting town administrator. What you're voting here this evening is not the project, what you're voting this evening is the appropriation of funding to actually do the project. You're not voting the, the process that is followed, and if we don't get the funding to paint the building, we don't have to spend the money to put the gutters on the building. So that money would then fall back to free cash. So, so I, I, I'm not sure why we're down this path, but you're not voting the project.
Good explanation. I withdraw if I can.
So you're withdrawing your amendment and...
I withdraw the amendment.
Mr. Vaughn, are you withdrawing your second?
I withdraw my second.
Thank you. So we are now on the main motion, which is to purchase gutters. Mrs. Kuzinkis.
Now, I, I just wanted to add for everybody out there, everybody should know I'm, I'm chairperson of the Council on Aging down here.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I just wanted everybody to know that I'm chairperson of the Council on Aging down here. The building's a hundred or two years old and we've just lately, we had the roof done. But I mean, we have a lot of seniors who really enjoy that and we really would use your support to pass this. There's any elements coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are on the main motion. Mrs. Sussa?
Uh, I just have one question not to, does this cost include the price of abatement from mold, lead or asbestos or anything with the painting and the gutters? Because there's so many gutters because of mold. Does the abatement cost included in this or is that a separate cost?
There, there is no abatement cost in this part of the article, as far as the gutters.
So we are on the motion, I'm forgetting where we are at this point. We're on Article thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five is gutters, right?
Yes.
We're on Article thirty-five, installing gutters. All those, is there any further discussion on Article thirty-five? In absence of further discussion, all those in favor of Article thirty-five could signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair has put his name in his vote in agreement. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end or transfer from available funds the sum of money for the purpose of hiring qualified professionals, professional professionals to assist the town in ensuring rating to stone water management compliance measures or take any action relative via two. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand three hundred and three dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand three hundred and three dollars for the purposes written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
You've heard a motion and a second to accept Article thirty-six is written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article if approved provides funding for the town to meet the requirements pursuant to Somerset's general bylaw for discharges to the municipal stormwater system and as mandated by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor sit in Article thirty-six as written and recommended could signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair has put his name in his vote in agreement. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end or transfer from available funds the sum of money for the purpose of infrastructure maintenance and upgrades of the town's stormwater system, including any incidental costs or expenses or take any action relative via two. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighty thousand dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighty thousand dollars for the purposes written in this article and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
Second. You've heard a motion and a second to accept Article thirty-seven as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article if approved will provide funding for infrastructure maintenance and upgrade it relative to the town's stormwater system. This article will offer stormwater structure inspections and expenses related to camera viewing of lines and hydrogen lines.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair has put his name in his vote in agreement. Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will create a capital improvement stabilization fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's forty section five, in the purpose of funding certain capital improvements in the town, including any design, engineering, construction and any incidental or related costs or expenses. And raise appropriate end or transfer from available funds the sum of money for the purpose of funding such stabilization fund or take any action relative via two. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to approve this article and that the appropriation, the appropriate, and to appropriate the sum of three million dollars for the purpose of this article and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
I move that the town vote to establish a capital improvement stabilization fund as set forth in this article and further to appropriate the sum of three million dollars for the purpose of funding the capital improvement stabilization fund so created and that sum be transferred from free cash.
Second. Thank you. You've heard a motion and a second to accept Article thirty-eight is written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Vaughn.
This article if approved will create a capital improvement stabilization fund and funding utilizing free cash. As part of the fiscal year 2023 budget process, the town went through various department heads to establish the framework for a capital improvement plan and identifying certain capital needs within the community projected for the next ten years. The best source of funding for such a program is through one-time revenues such as free cash from the general fund revenues and retained earnings from the water and sewer enterprise fund. Another means to accomplish this would be the establishment of capital improvement stabilization account that can be used, utilized to fund the capital needs of the various departments. Town meeting would have control over this fund and the ability to approve expenditures each year based on the needs of the community.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Mendez, are you walking very quickly out of the microphone?
Madam Moderator, I'm walking as fast as I can, my... Uh, Madam Moderator, the town administrator spoke to us before the meeting started and he says, he seems to be saying here again that the best source of funding for such a program is through one-time revenues, free cash. I'd like to hear his opinion on this, uh, capital, uh, capital improvement stabilization account.
So you'd like Mr. Gallagher to explain more of why this is a necessary account? Is that what I, what I'm hearing? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Excuse me, um, Mike Gallagher, you're, uh, acting town administrator. This is actually an article that I brought forward to the board of selectmen because I felt it would be appropriate to take some of the funds that we have in free cash and create a capital improvement stabilization account. It would allow town meeting to control, uh, any capital improvements, uh, down the road. It would also take that fund, those funds and put them into a stabilization account that you can either add to or draw from as the needs of the community, uh, come up for various capital, uh, projects throughout the, the town. Uh, it also removes the, the, um, what I'm looking for.
Temptation.
The temptation to utilize those funds for other purposes. So it would actually lock it in for capital improvement, which is what you really want to do with your one-time funds. You want to use those for one-time expenses like capital expenses, you know, using those for operating costs. So this would, this would put that money aside for capital improvement. It would come to town meeting, require two-thirds vote, I believe two-thirds vote to take that fund out to fund any of the capital projects that would come forward to town meeting. So that was actually on my recommendation.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, thank you for creating, uh, this account, all our suggested creation. Uh, I believe we started the night with over eight million dollars in free cash. After this, it'll be somewhere south of five million. How, how did we land on the three million versus...
Three?
More? You still have, you know, five million available in surplus, um, to be used for the temptations as, as others are referring to.
Well, when you, when you look at past budgeting, in order to, to wean the town out of their use of free cash, a lot of people look at free cash as just available money for doing exactly this, whereas the capitalization account is set for these ten, for the ten-year plan that's been developed. Uh, we originally did want to put five million in, but three million was settled as a more palatable number, uh, given the introduction of the fund. We do intend in further years to continue to add to that fund to fund the ten-year capitalization.
And one quick follow-up. Uh, who, who, which town departments have access to this fund? Is, I know it's mentioned in water and sewer, I don't believe that they would have access to this fund and, and does the school department have access, uh, to this fund for their capital?
Madam Moderator, if you'd like?
May.
Sorry, folks, I hurt my back. Um, so, hi, thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, I'd, I'd like to address two items. One is the, the balance, uh, that'll be left in your, uh, free cash would be two-point-eight million, the, the bottom line, your, your spreadsheet, you will have spent, uh, if you move this three million, you've spent, you would move five million, four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars, either three million to this capital stabilization, the other two million in, in, uh, items that we've needed for the town. Uh, as far as access to the funds, the funds are available for all the departments with the exception of, of water and sewer that have to retain their access. I would think that they, they, they have their own fund resources and can, um, move it to the, the general fund. Any of the other departments within the town, including the school department that have access, uh, should, 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 should respond. And again, we have two-point-eight million, uh, at the end of the year, uh, when we go home. And then we don't know what our free cash would be for fiscal year 2022 when we close 2022. And at that point, my recommendation would be for the selectmen, along with your new town administrator, to take a look at that and see, see what they need to...
And to reiterate, um, what Mr. Gallagher had said before, to use any money from the state, the capitalization or the stabilization account for capitalization would require what a regular step, set stabilization account requires, which is a two-third vote at town meeting. So it can't be used by just anybody. You have the last, you as town meeting people would have the last say. Victor?
Uh, Madam Moderator.
Or Mr. Machado, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, Madam Moderator, um, I, I want to piggyback what Mr. Gardett mentioned and I do appreciate Mr. Gallagher mentioning that it would be for any town other than the water and also probably the, uh, high school as well. But my question is how, what kind of guarantees can we have that all departments, town departments would be able to have access to this money? Is it something that we have to amend the motion or it's not necessary? Okay, that's all I was... Thank you.
It would be an article at town meeting.
Madam Moderator.
If I could.
You may.
Thank you. Never to sit up and down, but, um, so Madam Moderator, if I could, uh, as part of that ten-year capital program, which I would, I would reach out to the school department and ask the schools to get involved in that next year. I know you have your own capital stabilization account, but I think as part of that ten-year capital improvement program, you need to keep that up every year, you need to revisit that every year. Every department puts forward their, their requests, those requests are then vetted by a, a, a team within the, within the town. Um, I would recommend a finance team be, be established or a capital planning committee, something, some group that would actually review all of these. I did it this year, along with a couple of folks in the finance department, reviewed the requests that came in from the departments, put all those together and what you've seen here this evening is a list that came out of all that. And we'll see that each department, we try to do something for every department. I think that's a process that you need to continue and you need to just do that to to help the capital plan.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Madam Moderator, so I think something that's very important in that article, it does show that engineering is available, money's for engineering, which is very important because last year, I think, remember last year at town meeting, we approached the town residents and said, we'd like to spend three million dollars on our budget to be able to put out RFPs for engineering so that we could go and try to get some grant money because the federal government society, they give away a lot of free money that you've all paid for, that our grandchildren are paying for, but at least we have the opportunity to get that. Right now, the water department is very, very close to getting a very, very big grant because of what we did and we've put out other things. So it's very important and the one thing about grant, about doing the engineering, you cannot bond or fund the engineering, right? You can't do that. You have to be able to pay for the engineering and then you can go out and get the grant money. So it's extremely important, especially with wastewater because the stormwater is not part of it, but it's water and sewer department, it's part of, but the highway is in charge of, and that's a whole other thing. So they're going to be going to have to have that redone. They're going to certainly need the engineering money and this is already there, so it's a perfect opportunity. So I, I applaud the way I came up with it, Mr. Gallagher. How many weeks?
Thank you, Scott.
I miss you already.
Thanks, Scott. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Paul Coglin, 159 Main Street. Uh, this is a question, I guess perhaps to Michael as well, and that is, is, uh, is there a difference between a capital improvement stabilization fund and a capital improvement stabilization account in terms of approval required at the town meeting? I have a bit of concern about the two-thirds requirement at a town meeting for capital, yes, at a town meeting for capital improvements, and I wonder if there's a difference going forward to the potential.
So, Madam Moderator, I don't necessarily have the answer to that. I'm not an attorney.
We can refer to counsel.
Counselors here, I'm not sure if that's something you can address, but I, this is, this capital improvement stabilization account, I'm not sure you can make a capital improvement fund versus a capital stabilization account, like any other stabilization account. I'll also recognize that every vote this evening has been unanimous for the capital request that we put forward. So I think the taxpayers of the town, give them credit, you folks have an idea of what it is that is necessary for proper operation of your town, and I think it's probably relevant. So, thank you.
So we're still on Article 38, which is the establishment of the capital improvement stabilization account fund. It's all the same thing. Mr. Finkless?
Madam Moderator, I'm Joe Finkless, 121 Shancon Circle, Somerset, Mass. First of all, I'd like to thank the selectmen in the form of selectmen's who's up. But putting together this plan is the first time I've seen a plan of this back to, you know, a thought thought going forward to put together a capital improvement plan in many, many, many years. It's long overdue. Uh, you know, a perfect example of that is the Somerset Park Regional High School, as opposed to the old Somerset High School. We saw what happened when we didn't have a plan in place. It cost us too much money to do that. But the point of me speaking here tonight, I do not be in favor of allowing the Somerset School Department to allocate or take funds from this plan. The school department takes approximately 60 to 67% of all of our taxpayer money in order to fund the school department. They have their own capital budget maintenance and operation plan in place. To allow them to now allocate to utilize these funds in this capital management program on this article would not allow them to improperly budget through their own school funding, come back to the town, and now utilize other taxpayers' money to, you know, resolve or take care of, you know, mismanagement or, you know, problems that they did not properly address in their own budget and their own plan. I am totally in favor of this article, but I am not in favor of allowing the school department to come in. It's almost like they're double-dipping. If they can't budget their own money and take care of their own issues with their operation management, I don't think they should come back and take other taxpayer money away from other capital improvements, which are readily necessary in this town.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Smith?
Right now, they have the ability to request funds through free cash. So, I mean, this money is coming from free cash. Right now, they have the ability to put a article on town meeting requesting capital improvements out of free cash. So, you know, it's just, you know, in the stabilization account versus being in free cash, but the school department has the right to use free cash, just as, you know, other departments.
Mr. Finkless, I'm going to ask counsel to clear that up for you, because this comes under Massachusetts General Law's 40, Section 5B.
Madam Moderator, through you, two members. Um, Chapter 40, Section 5B provides for the establishment of stabilizations funds for use for any capital projects that are within the scope of the article so establishing, or the motion under the article so establishing the fund under said chapter. And as written here in this broad sense, it would include, in my opinion, any purposes including eligible school costs and other capital improvements for which a town or city can borrow. So it does require, as I think alluded to earlier, that any funds appropriate out of the fund go back to you, subject to a supermajority vote, two thirds.
I, I appreciate your clarification on that, but my, my other concern is, why would the school department pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for a finance manager and other professionals who pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to already in salary and benefits to put together a budget which includes operation, maintenance, and repairs, et cetera, and now allow them to be able to come back and essentially pick the pockets of the taxpayers again, because they can't properly budget and maintain their operation maintenance budget? I just think that is not really the best use of the funds for operation maintenance when we have so many operation maintenance problems in this town to allow a school department to...
They, they can do it now. So they, they can come to town meeting, they can request funding for free cash right now to be able to fund capital improvements within the K-8 schools. So this is just a different fund, which actually sets a higher threshold. They would need to get a two-thirds vote instead of a simple majority vote by using free cash.
And Gerald, Massachusetts General Laws does allow that to happen. So while I appreciate your comments, unless Massachusetts General Laws has changed and doesn't allow school departments to be part of it, it is part of it.
I understand, I appreciate that, Madam Moderator. I, I just think that the school department should be physically responsible in maintaining and operate their operating budgets to include any foreseeable maintenance or operational issues solely as the power, you know, pertaining to the school department, when the town can use those ones to take care of town services for the other taxes. But I do appreciate your comment, Madam Moderator, that I understand it, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, I understand it's not allowed under the master law. I do take a little bit of offense to the prior speaker. My understanding is that this is used for one-time expenses. Based on that justification, the fencing that we just approved from the police department should have been planned and in their budget. The gutters, the constable agents should have been in their budget, those were first scene expenses. So I appreciate it not being allowed, uh, to be removed from the article, but I did just want to speak on that.
Thank you. Mr. Michelle?
Madam Moderator, being a member of the school committee for 17 years, I want to explain to the previous speaker before Mr. Gardett, what a...
We're just on the part...
I want to explain to the town what the definition of operating expense and a capital expense. An operating expense is when you have maintenance, uh, like cleaning the rugs in this auditorium, or maintaining the light fixtures or light bulbs. Those are operating expenses. Replacing a boiler, replacing windows, those are called capital expenses. And, um, so for a member who's been on the board for 17 years, I take it very personal to say that we're not taking care of our schools. With all due respect, with Mr. Gallagher's idea, this article may prevent us from coming back to you in four to five years because we don't have the capital expense and then we have to replace buildings. You can't have it in both areas. So with all due respect, Madam Moderator, the definition of an operating expense versus a capital expense is completely different, and I think that, I mean, a comment like that is, um, pretty insulting to the taxpayers because we should all, we know what the difference is. Thank you.
So Victor, while I appreciate your comments, we are on the article, and that is to establish a capital stabilization fund, and all future comments need to be addressed to the article only.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I have a question. Mr. Gallagher? How much exactly are we getting, taking out of free cash this year, is it 500,000?
Yes, the article is allowing for, what was your question?
My question is how much is coming out of free cash at the end of the year? Is it 500,000 we're taking out of free cash to get the operating budget?
Yep, Madam Moderator, two years, we're taking half a million dollars. We voted to take half a million dollars out of free cash for the operating budget this year.
I would like to make a motion to amend this article to reduce it by 500,000 dollars.
So you want to remove, let me just see if I...
I want to keep the money in free cash, and then put two and a half million in.
Do you, you understand that? Mr. Ford, who made this motion? Mr. Ford, do you want to address that a little bit so that, because I think we're under misunderstanding?
I, I will address that, Mr. Ford. So, furthermore, I stated in the beginning, we wanted to put 5 million in, which would all be, it was 800,000 in free cash. It sounds like you want to, because we used 500, replace it with it. I would say that every dime we can put in here in free cash is in the benefit of everybody in this town, and we just put in a smaller amount to make it palatable. However, uh, the more we can put in there is absolutely necessary.
All right, I withdraw.
Thank you. Mr. Finkless, on the motion?
Yep.
Not on the school department, we're on the motion of establishing a capitalization, stabilization capitalization program.
Like I said, I'm totally in favor of the, of the account.
Okay, I just want to make sure you're on the motion.
I think it's amazing, it's the first time in years that we've even had your thought thought to even think about this. My last comment is, all we need to do is look at is that the Somerset High School, what happened to the Somerset High School owners was maintained, and that was the Somerset School Department and their, and their employees, not the town of Somerset, which our taxpayer money went to bail them out.
Thank you. We are on Article 38, which is to establish a capital improvement stabilization account. Everyone understands where we are. There are no other motions. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quigley, unanimous vote in affirmative. Article 39, to see if the town will vote to accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40U in its entirety, allowing the administration a fine as a result of violations of any rule, regulation, order, or bylaw, or take any other action relative thereto. The advisor finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to approve this article.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Ford?
I move that the town vote to accept the provision of MGL, Chapter 40U in its entirety. Second?
You've read a motion second to accept Article 39 as written and recommended. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Ford?
Acceptance of this article will broaden the town's ability to impose a collective fines for a, for a variety of code bylaw violations.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We ask that to further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quigley, unanimous vote in affirmative. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipment. One new pickup utility service truck for the water pollution control department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisor finance committee unanimously recommends the town vote to appropriate the sum of $80,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $80,000 for service of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
You've read a motion second to accept Article 39 as written, I'm sorry, Article 40 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
This article will allow the water and sewer department to access funds from its reserve account to purchase a pickup truck with utility body tools, safety equipment related accessories, and efficiently facilitate maintenance and repair for the town's pumping stations and sewage collection.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator, Lloyd Mendes, 46, Anawans. Earlier on, we, we accepted the replacement of three police vehicles. One of them was going to be transferred to, to another town department because a second-hand vehicle isn't such a problem. I just like to hear from the town administrator, is there any possibility of using the other two police vehicles that we're replacing? They're not, they're primarized. I'm not either, but I can still serve on the board.
So, the, the town administrator stepped out, but the one...
Point of order? Not the sergeant? Not the sergeant?
Oh, okay.
What was it, who made, what point of order?
It's not the sergeant, it's a police vehicle.
I'm, no, no, I'm asking about used vehicles. Uh, we, we have to, we just replaced three vehicles in the town. One of them is being transferred to another department. Could, could the water department use these two police vehicles that...
No.
Uh, no, we couldn't. Sorry, thank you.
I wouldn't mind you, I'd get that and walk away.
So, actually, on the point of order, it really wasn't out of order because he was really asking if we could use the other vehicles. Thank you, Lloyd. We are on Article 40 as written and recommended. Is there any further discussion? We ask that to further discussion, the chair will take the vote. Article 40. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quigley, unanimous vote in affirmative. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipment. One yard utility vehicle for the water pollution control department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisor finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Cadaret?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Thank you. You've read a motion second to accept Article 41 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
This article will allow the water and sewer department to access funds from its reserve account to purchase a new yard utility vehicle. The vehicle we use exclusively is a plant to facilitate maintenance and repair work at the numerous buildings, tanks, and equipment sites that comprise the complex. Presently, trucks and the loader are used for these purposes, which consume more fuel than a yard utility vehicle.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We ask that to further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quigley, unanimous vote in affirmative. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate, raise appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipping one vacuum trailer for the water pollution control department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisor finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $125,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund. Mr. Cadaret?
Madam Moderator, I move that the, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $125,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Second.
You've read a motion second to accept Article 42 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Madam Moderator, this article will allow the water and sewer department to access funds from its reserve account to purchase a new vacuum trailer to replace the existing unit, which has far exceeded its useful life. The vacuum trailer is vital for the maintenance of the sewage collection system and for clearing pipe blockages that can result from sewage backups into basements and property flooding.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We ask that to further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quigley, unanimous vote in affirmative. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipment. One six, one six-inch trash pump for the water pollution control department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisor finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund. Mr. Cadaret?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Second.
You've read a motion second to accept Article 43 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator, this article will allow the water and sewer department to access funds from its reserve account to purchase a new trash pump to facilitate the pumping of liquid sludge from the plant's holding tanks, to tank and trucks that are transported to the town's contracted sludge disposal facility. The disposal, the disposal facility no longer accepts sludge case, which has necessitated the purchase of liquid sludge handling equipped by the town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We ask that to further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quigley, unanimous vote in affirmative. Article 44, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end-to-end transfer from available funds a sum of money to furnish and install two chemical storage tanks at the water pollution control department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisor finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town appropriate, the town vote to appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Second.
You've read a motion second to accept Article 44 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator, this article will allow the water and sewer department to access funds from its reserve account to purchase and install new chemical storage tanks and relating piping controls, et cetera. The existing tanks... The existing tanks are deteriorated and have exceeded their useful lives. This is concern that these tanks could rupture at any time, spilling their contents onto the surrounding area.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, Article 44 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair put his unanimous vote in for him. Article 45, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of upgrading the existing SCDA, scatter, scatter system at the water pollution control facility, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water sewer enterprise fund.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article 45 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator, this article will allow the water sewer, water and sewer department to access funding from its reserve account to upgrade the existing wire based SCADA system to a more modern fiber optic system. SCADA system monitors the performance of the equipment at the plant, and it's vital for proper operation. The present system is outdated and subject to failure.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of discussion, further discussion, the chair will take the vote. Article 45 as written and recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair put his unanimous vote in for him. Article 46, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of providing a town share, a match, a grant from the EES dam and sewer seable program to make safety improvements to the Somerset reservoir behind the water department located at 3249 Combe Street in Somerset, Mass, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of this article as designated, and said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water sewer enterprise fund.
You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article 46 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator, this, this article will allow the water, sorry, the water department to access funds from its reserve account to construction of first, a phase one reservoir safety improvement project. The reservoir is the main source of potable water in Somerset, and it also supplies potable water to a portion of, yeah, portion of Dyne. The reservoir is enclosed by an earthen dam which has concrete outlet structures for the control of water flow to the water treatment plant. This specific article will appropriate $250,000 as the town's matching share of the phase one construction cost. Dam overtopping has been identified as a potential, sorry, yeah, overtopping has been identified as a potential safety problem. The phase one construction project will be for the raising of the dam height to mitigate the chance of overtopping due to the major storm events, and for improvements to the outlet structure to better control the flow of reservoir water to the plant for treatment. It is anticipated that phase one construction will begin this year. Additional funding for this project will be provided from a grant obtained through the efforts of Congress and aquaports and Representative Haddad, Somerset.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, Article 46 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair put his unanimous vote in for him. Article 47, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipping one pickup utility service truck for the water department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $8,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. O'Brien.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $80,000 for the purchase of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water sewer enterprise fund.
Second. Thank you. You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article 47 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. O'Brien.
This article will allow the water department to access funds from the reserve account to purchase a new pickup truck with a utility body, safety equipment, and related accessories for the safety and efficient facilitation of maintenance and repairs to the town's water piping system, water storage tanks, and other facilities.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 47? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 47 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair put his unanimous vote in for him. Article 48, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipping one trailer mounted towel compressor and accessories for the water department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. O'Brien.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $35,000 for this purpose of this article, and said sum be transferred by retained earnings in the water sewer enterprise fund.
Second. You've heard a motion, second, to accept Article 48 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. O'Brien.
Madam Moderator, this article will allow the water and sewer department to access funds from their reserve account to purchase a new trailer mounted compressor with tools and accessories. The existing compressor is approximately 25 years old and is, and has passed its useful life. Parts of the housing of the body rusted, and the unit is not worth rebuilding. The compressor is frequently used and must be available when needed for service and maintenance repairs.
Is there any further discussion on Article 48? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair put his unanimous vote in for him. Article 49, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing and equipping one yard utility vehicle for the water department, including any incidental costs or expenses, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of this article, and that said sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. O'Brien.
Madam Moderator, this article will allow the water and sewer departments to access funds from their reserve account to purchase a new yard utility vehicle. This vehicle will be used at the facility to plan maintenance activities and security around the reservoir. Presently, pickup trucks are used to access down to the reservoir levees. The water pump has a project underway to improve the levee, fully raising the top elevation. Pickup trucks are much too heavy, much heavier than the yard utility vehicle that has an impact on the levee. We have no fishing signs posted around the reservoir, but it hasn't deferred people from going there. The yard vehicle will allow for periodic monitoring to be shipped to the reservoir without risk to the levee.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 49? He didn't read the motion? You read the description, not the motion, and I, I was sleeping because I was following your reading.
Madam Moderator, we'll go back. It's not a moderator.
So, we're on Article 49, as I read it, and I'm waiting for, and recommended by the A and F committee, and we need a motion.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the purposes written in this article, and that said be transferred, that sum be transferred from retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Second. There's a motion, second, on the floor, and the discussion has already been done. Is there any further discussion that we would like to add to what Scott spoke about? I'm folding. No, no, it's all right, Scott. In the absence of further discussion, we are on Article 48 as written and recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. I have the moderator, Joe Holmes. Article 50, see if the town...
I'd like to make a motion to not reconsider Articles 16 through 30.
We did, we already did 16.
So, what are we up to?
30 through 49.
30 through 49. 31 through 49.
I'd like to make a motion to revisit Article 31.
You want to revisit Article 31? To reconsider Article 31?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
There is no second. That motion will die for lack of a second. It's the police...
On page 16.
I'm sorry?
On page 16.
My page is making difference than yours.
So, it's Article 31 regarding the standing of the parking lot and installing a security fencing, just to be honest with us.
And you asked to revisit it or reconsider it, but I didn't hear a second. I'm sorry. There is a second. So, we are on reconsideration of that article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. With no disrespect, I would just like some clarification on the bylaws in Somerset about increasing value to a article that is posted on our town warrant.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who I was consulting with. Can you repeat that?
Yes. With no disrespect, Madam Moderator, to your recent discussion on this, I would like to know what our town bylaws are on increasing of value as listed in the town warrant, on an article within the town warrant.
There are no bylaws, so it's the discretion of the moderator.
Thank you. So, Madam Moderator, I'd just like to make an argument for this. I, we have here in presence motivated voters who came here with the intention of voting on our budget. I understand that you stated that to protect the voters that aren't here, that your general consensus is to not increase. Correct. Mr. Goddard made some great points about encompassing this whole project together to potentially either save costs or save time, and I was hoping that you would, as a friendly reconsideration, allow the voters here to vote with perhaps two-thirds vote, to see if we could vote on increasing this one time today.
And again, I will, while I respect what you're saying, Jessica, I will tell you that it's always been my position as moderator not to increase any articles because this has already been out in public. It has been discussed at collectance meetings, which people have an opportunity to listen to. It has, copies have been available through the town courts office. Copies are available online. So, that is why people don't come. They assume that these articles are going to be passed or negated as they are. So, adding it to the amount of money, which is another $100,000, which is way over the cost of what that article said, which is $137,000. That is why I will not allow that motion to include that. Thank you.
Madam Moderator. Richard Pierce, 15, South of Terrace, I'd just like to add to that. I believe the issue is whether that request is beyond the scope of the article.
Correct.
And the article provides for offense, it doesn't provide for repaving the parking lot. So, I would agree with the ruling of the moderator to add repaving the parking lot is beyond the scope of the article.
I think, Rich, that's probably the first time we've agreed.
Madam Moderator, is line in the text, line of the document part of this article?
Line in the pavement?
I thought I heard line in pavement, no? Oh, I think line in.
Expanding the parking lot and install, and installing security fencing. However, it's the amount of money that is concerned. When this article came up, it came up as being that there was $137,000 allocated to the fencing part, in that the paving part was above that, and that's why it was removed from the article.
Okay. And I, I just want to say that the voters that have interest in the money being spent tonight are here.
But there is a responsibility, and I understand what you're saying.
I do take your position, but I do want to acknowledge that the voters who are interested in the money being spent tonight are sitting right here. I, I understand there are many people who do not attend for various reasons.
But it is part of the moderator's responsibility to make sure all citizens are protected, and that there is a thought among moderators that when people don't come, it could be because they assume that what is already printed is either going to be passed or not passed, not to be increased by a much double. So, increasing it by another $100,000, in my mind, is increasing it beyond the scope of the article.
Could it be amended that if there were lots of the funds from the project, it could be put towards...
It wouldn't be enough, it wouldn't be enough to pay for that.
Right, don't put towards that to town anyway now.
They can present it at next town. That can be presented, a new article can be presented.
Just seems like it would save money to do it all at once. I respect your position.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I make a motion that we forward a reconsideration of Articles 31 to 49.
There's a motion on the floor to not reconsider, I'm losing my place here, Articles 31 to 49, is that what you said?
Yes.
All those, is, was there a second to that? There's a motion in the second that we not reconsider Articles 31 to 49. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair put his unanimous vote in for him. Article 50, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate end of transfer from available funds a sum of money necessary to carry out changes for fiscal year 2023 in the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Somerset and Local 2649 and the internal, I'm sorry, the International Association of Firefighters, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee will have a recommendation at town meeting. Michael?
The advisory and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend, recommend the appropriation of the sum of $76,191, and that said sum be transferred from free cash.
Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $76,191 to fund the first year of the cost items associated with the agreement between the town of Somerset and Local 2649 of the International Association of Firefighters for the period of 7/1/22 to June 30th, 2024, and that said sum be raised from free cash.
Thank you. You've heard a motion, and the second, to accept Article 50 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Boyd?
This article is approved will fund the necessary, will fund the costs necessary to implement the first year's cost of the negotiated modifications effectively July 1st, 2022, to the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters' union. Said sum to be used to provide pay adjustments or other benefits to meet the costs necessary to implement the terms of the agreement reached between the town and the firefighters' union.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith?
I make a motion that we amend the article. The date should be for one year period, 7/1/22 to June 30th. So, that's the contract period, never mind. What's wrong?
All right. So, you're withdrawing that, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sussa, you have a question or a discussion?
Just a quick question. It's a one-year contract?
No, 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 no. 7/1/22 to June 30th, 2020.
What is, what is the total amount over the three, what is it, three-year, whatever the contract is? What is the total, like, it's endless what it's going to be to pay it this year? What is the total? This is just, this is the amount to fund fiscal year.
This is funding the first year of the contract. You're asking what's going to be...
So, this is, this is funding fiscal 2023? No. No.
No.
Mr. Gallagher is going to address the question. Susan's fine for papers, so I have a small notebook so I can find them easier. He only has the first year, so.
Now, this is this article?
No, this is, no, this is a new one. This is Article 50. Mr. Barris, chief. I know you were sitting in the back for a reason, but you need to come up front. Do you have that figure? Jamie?
So, there's a little bit of confusion here. We're in the middle of the contract cycle, just to explain, the article appears to address some amendments that were made within the contract in the collective bargaining process. So it's just going to fund that year. We can't give you the next year because we haven't bargained that. Things will change, education expenses, et cetera, et cetera. We can give you pieces of that, but we don't have that exact figure for FY '24.
So stay there. Does that answer your question, Mr. Sousa? Does anyone else have any questions on Article 50? In the, thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote on Article 50. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 51. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of money necessary to carry out changes for fiscal year 2023 in the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Somerset and Highway Department Union Local 1701 of the American Federation of State Company and Municipal Employees, AFL, CIO. State Council 93, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee will have a recommendation at town meeting. Michael?
I recommend to indefinitely postpone.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to indefinitely postpone this article.
Motion on the floor as to indefinitely postpone. That is the recommendation of the A&amp;F committee and that has been seconded. Discussion, Mr. Boyd?
Madam Moderator, this article is approved with funding a second year cost of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement for the highway department. At this time, at the time of printing of this law, the parties have not reached an agreement on the contract.
Any further discussion on indefinite postponement? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 52. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and to transfer from available funds the sum of money necessary to carry out changes for fiscal year 2023 in the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Somerset and the Water Department Union Local 1701, State Council 93, American Federation of State Company and Municipal Employees, AFL, CIO, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee will have a recommendation at town meeting. Michael?
The recommendation again is to indefinitely postpone.
Mr. Boyd?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to indefinitely postpone this article. Second.
You've read a motion and a second to indefinitely postpone Article 52 as recommended by the A&amp;F committee and motion. All those in favor, Article 52 being indefinitely postponed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 53. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and to transfer from available funds the sum of money necessary to carry out changes for fiscal year 2023 in the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Somerset and the Water Pollution Control Union, Local 1701, State Council 93, American Federation of State Company and Municipal Employees, AFL, CIO, or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee will have a recommendation at this meeting.
The A&amp;F committee votes to recommend to indefinitely postpone this article.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Boyd?
I move that the town vote to indefinitely postpone this article. Second.
You've read a motion and a second to indefinitely postpone Article 53 as recommended by the A&amp;F committee. All, is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, indefinitely postponing Article 53, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 54. To see if the town will vote to surrender to the community preservation program to appropriate the total sum of $125,000, of which $34,208 will come from the Community Preservation Historical Reserve Fund and $45,791.60 will come from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Fund and $45,000 from free cash for the restoration of the entrance to the Old Town Hall located at 1480 County Street in Somerset, Mass. Such project to include construction of the accessible entrance, improvements to the parking with a new handicap parking configuration, replacement of the existing accessible entrance on the south side of the building, replacement of the ramp, and other modifications to be determined during the design of the period of the project, I'm sorry, including but not limited to site preparation, equipment, furnishings, and any other incidental or related costs or expenses or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. Community renovation committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Turner.
I move that the town vote on Article 54 is presented.
You've read a motion and a second to accept Article 54 as written and recommended. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Turner.
This article is approved will provide funding for the restoration of the entrance to the Old Town Hall. Such project to include construction of an accessible entrance, improvements to the parking with a new handicap parking configuration, replacement of the existing accessible entrance on the south side of the building, replacement of the ramp, and other modifications to be determined during the design of the project, including but not limited to site preparation, equipment, furnishings, and any other incidental or related costs.
Is there any further discussion on Article 54? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 54 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 55. To see if the town will vote to surrender to the community preservation program to appropriate the total sum of $120,000, of which $34,198.60 will come from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Funds, $45,801.60 will come from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Fund, and $40,000 from free cash for the removal and replacement of the existing playground equipment and basketball court at the South Complex Field Play, I'm sorry, I don't even remember where I am now. Court at the South Complex Field Playground on Harton Hall Lane in Somerset, Mass, including but not limited to site preparation, equipment, and furnishings, and any other incidental or related costs or expenses or take any action relative thereto. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. The community preservation committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. Mr. Turner?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote on Article 55 as read and presented.
You've read a motion and a second to accept Article 55 as written and approved by the A&amp;F committee and the community preservation committee. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Turner.
This article is approved will provide funding for the removal and replacement of the existing playground equipment and basketball court at the South Complex Field Playground.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 55, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 56. Thank you. So Article 56. The A&amp;F committee does unanimously recommend it, as well as the CPC committee unanimously recommends it, and this is for the removal of the existing chipped and cracked paint at the Council on Aging. Mr. Turner?
Madam Moderator, I move Article 56 to be approved as presented and recommended.
You've read a motion and a second to accept Article 56 as written and recommended. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Turner.
This article is approved will provide funding for the removal of the existing chipped and cracked paint and the repainting of the entire trim located around the top of the outside portion of the Council on Aging Building formerly known as the autism school.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 56 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 57. Thank you, Chris. There's a motion on the floor to waive the reading. All those in favor of waiving the reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you very much. Article 57. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends the approval of this article. The community preservation committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. Mr. Turner?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 57 as presented and recommended.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor and a second to move Article 57 as written and recommended. Is there any, is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Turner.
This article is approved will provide funding for the restoration of the facade trim and building on what located at Quaker Meeting House.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote on Article 57. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 58. I have a motion and a second to waive the reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm to waive the reading and thank those opposed who said that. Mr. Turner?
Madam Moderator, I approve. I move that the town vote to approve Article 58 as written and recommended.
You've read a motion and a second to accept Article 58 as written and recommended. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Turner.
This article is approved will provide funding to move the pitchers mound closer to open plate, replace the infield mix, configure the field for 60 feet and 70 feet layouts, install new base anchors, back screen blown and seed to all renovation areas, laser grade and roll the field for a finished surface, install a new home plate, weed and edge the weed and edge the baseball field while disposing all excess material from the site of the former autism school baseball field.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 58 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 59. To see if the town will vote to pursue. Thank you. All those in favor of waiving the reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm to waive the reading. Article 59 as written and recommended is on the floor. Mr. Turner?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote on Article 59 is written and recommended.
You've read a motion and a second to accept Article 59 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Turner.
This article is approved will provide funding to replace the existing backstop, rebuild the dugout wall fence, replace the fabric on field number two, replacing any damaged and rusted exiting fences, screening or replacing of existing fence poles and re-cementing poles out of heat from the frost located at Ashton Field and 90 Olympic Road.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm in Article 60. To see if the town. There's a motion and a second to waive the reading of Article 60. All those in favor of waiving the reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair, thank you. The advisory finance committee unanimously recommends, and the community preservation committee unanimously recommends this article. Mr. Turner, you have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote on Article 60 as written and recommended.
You've read a motion and a second to accept Article 60 as written and recommended. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Turner.
This article is approved will appropriate and or reserve annual reserves for the following purposes, appropriation for community administration, sorry, appropriation for community administration expenses for $2,000, reserves for stated purposes, $399,640.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 60? Hearing none, the chair will take the vote. All those in favor of Article 60 as written and recommended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Chair Quinsey Neves will affirm. All articles haven't been discussed, is taken here at the annual town meeting.
Madam Moderator.
The chair will entertain a motion to dissolve.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Smith.
I make a motion that we not reconsider Articles 50 through 60.
There's a motion on the floor for no reconsideration of Article 50 to 60.
50 through 60.
All those in favor of not reconsidering Articles 50 to 60, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Again, all articles haven't been discussed, the chair will entertain a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting.
Madam Moderator, I make a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting.
There's a motion and multiple seconds to have me dissolve the annual town meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you very much for your attendance. Please encourage your neighbors to come to this town.